If family has two or three vehicles, that's forty-five dollars I gotta spend.
You wanna knock it down then?
Knock it down, sweetie? What? I guess my question is, what does that money go to?
I don't see any place over there that'll leave those, you know what I mean? Usually there's an envelope I talk about, but I don't think.
The by committee is elected.
Well, I don't know. It's listed, so I'll check it.
I need to find that out.
If it ain't supposed to be checked, um, it ain't supposed to be checked. Oh crap, I forgot my coffee. It's real bad. I want to get my coffee.
I gotta run that. Go ahead and start. Is this posted on the line anyplace?
Posted where? Agenda?
Town of Hartford, uh, website, right on the front. If you go to home.
Oh, okay, I'm blind.
I'll show you.
I can't find it anyplace.
No, I figured out where the, where the, there went all the way back to.
Says that dot com or dot org or what is it?
I just searched on rural town of Hartford.
Yeah, okay, and it brings.
Town of Hartford, me, pops up.
Okay, yeah, and there, okay, alright.
Um, well, I got a lot of.
Maybe you did, huh?
Yeah, I start to sort here somewhere. Why can't I scroll down?
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't have any left, but that's.
No, it's under town office. I just don't know why I can't scroll down to it. Down here somewhere, but it won't let me. Go down there.
Taking time loading probably. But you found it?
It's on here. I know it. You gotta go, I think it's departments, and you go down to town office.
Okay.
And it's right on the front.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. If you wanna have an email to you, just ask Leanne to put up, you know, put on the email list.
Hey, Richard. Rich. We're gonna get going. Everybody got one of these?
Fee schedule?
Fee schedule.
I have a question.
Yeah.
What are these fees about?
It's whether we wanna.
Do you have it?
It's whether we wanna decrease or increase any of them. It's whether we wanna decrease or increase any of the charges.
Any of the fees.
For what, for like?
Do you have the list?
Richard, get the list. For everything.
I didn't see your list up there.
It's up there. Lenny, did you just grab the list?
She got your one. Richard. Richard!
I got next to her.
Yeah, Peggy.
Oh, is this, is this list of fees the current fee?
Yeah.
Or is that the proposed, if that's the current?
Yes.
Anybody have any questions on anything? Erin has a question for, for Leanne when she comes back, but.
His fee schedule, has it been changed at all? Do we have any idea when the last time any of the fees were changed?
Well, I know you said you changed the beach stickers.
Probably last year, maybe.
Two years ago the fees changed.
This year, this, this year, the, mostly the one item that we did go up on, and that was the town hall.
Town hall rental case.
Rental.
From seventy-five to one-twenty-five.
Correct.
Yeah.
Just from my understanding, why did that go up?
Well, I don't know. There was, uh, figuring on what other places charge and.
So basically with the cost of living type? Leanne, I just got a question to you. Um, the beach stickers. What does it cost us to get, to get those?
Made up?
I think it was like thirty-five, forty dollars having printed, just the year sticker. We still have a ton of those round stickers, so I just have to buy the year sticker.
Okay, so thirty-five, forty dollars gets us how many? Roughly.
Three or four hundred.
Okay.
But, um, that money pays for the constable, going down, mileage, checking.
Okay. Richard?
I've got a question. Just out of curiosity, building permit, something. How did that go from one hundred dollars to twenty-five hundred dollars, all in one jump?
That's a violation.
That's a violation. Probably, it depends on the violation.
You screw up.
Yeah.
Oh, oh, oh. And so instead of, instead of paying, if I mess up, instead of paying you a hundred dollars, I gotta pay you twenty-five hundred.
Depends how bad you screwed up.
Yeah, well, I mean, when I'm doing nothing, so.
Well, it depends upon the nature of the violation. The code enforcement officer may come there three or four times and say, maybe you should do this, maybe you should do this, and it's always obvious that you're not trying to change anything, so it might be a little more punitive.
Let me give you an example. As electrical contractor, if we fail to take a permit out for electrical project, we usually get a warning the first time. The second time you get a fine. The third time the fine goes up, so on.
So it depends on, on how bad the violation is, how many times it is, and, and all of that, and that twenty-five hundred is the maximum.
Correct.
Correct.
I see.
It might be for data, I don't know.
So Leanne, if we, if we should knock back the beach sticker for five dollars annually, will that cover?
I've already sold some this year. Do I refund people? I've sold a lot.
Okay, so I guess, I guess my question is, when would we need to, when was, when should we have knocked it back if we were gonna?
They reviewed the beach policy every January. You guys approved the policy in January, but it's required to have this hearing for the fees.
Okay, so when January rolls, we're back around, what's gonna trigger us? Will it be on the agenda?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
That policy.
We can wait till like.
Good question. Is it, that, you're just unclear, but I believe that's per vehicle?
It is. That's why I wanna change it, because I think fifteen, that's my understanding, is when I've asked before, if you have two vehicles and a side-by-side, do you just stick it for every one of them? They're not transferable.
Right.
So that's why I think it's too much.
Okay, so is that, I guess we'll have to wait until January.
That's all that stuck out to me.
We had quite a discussion about these subdivision applications.
Yeah, well, well, that was my, my other question, right? I mean, some of these fees are actually in the ordinances, and is there any way we can just put in a caveat in all the ordinances, see the fee schedule, instead of specifying the actual fee?
You would have to change all the ordinances at town meeting.
Well, that's what I'm asking. Is that a clerical thing, or is that something that has to go through the whole ethic, at the annual meeting to just have?
To change any ordinance has to go to the meeting for approval.
Just be aware of it.
What?
It's complicated. It's like the building permit, on this year.
But we did, we went through every ordinance and tried to find every fee that's charged in the ordinances to add it to this, just so it's clear and we all know.
Right, but if you, if you for instance thought that maybe a subdivision needed a different fee, can you change it on this and not have a change in the ordinance? That's what I'm, that's my question.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
So that's why you should change the ordinances to say, see the fee schedule. So it shouldn't be that hard to go through the, maybe for next year's meeting, I'm gonna make you a long list.
I get, I get what she's saying now.
Yeah, because we, it was confusing with one particular application that we had, because the preliminary plan was so satisfactory, we were able to skip right to.
Can. Can you get a list of what's, I don't, all the ordinance?
Every ordinance is listed here. We can have the ordinance committee revise all the ordinances with fees and take the fees out and say, see.
I think, I think she's right, 'cause if we ever wanted to change these, we'd have to wait a year to do it.
Or especially at town meeting. But it's nothing urgent.
No, it's not.
But you do have ordinance committee list on your agenda, so if you really want to do that, you can give that to them to do.
Okay.
I mean, I, I, not that I'm really in favor of raising fees, but I just have heard people say that a hundred dollars seems very low for a building permit for a new house.
Low?
Low. I've just heard people say that.
Yep.
I know a lot of it is six dollars on a thousand for building permits.
Some of them used to be like a dollar or something. I'm not gonna do.
A lot of times they want to keep it affordable, so people will get the building permit, not build without the permit.
Six dollars on a thousand, what, of what?
The total project, no?
The total project, no? So what's it, okay.
So feasible, so that's a thousand reasons.
Tables and chairs, what's that, to borrow tables and chairs from here?
Yep.
So when you rent the hall, you don't get the tables and chairs unless you pay?
No, it's separate.
Oh, okay.
We were up on a tires collection because that's what it was, that's what it cost to get rid of them.
That's right, it's another change.
I'm good with it, as long as we talk about that beach thing in January.
Because if you have an exception.
Hi, Mo. How are you?
That's what I'm gonna name my next dog, Beefy.
Okay.
You don't need no.
Get your French crudo then. I have a question. When do you need a tree cutting permit? Always?
In shoreline zone?
In shoreline, sure.
Do, no. I guess I have to be the shoreline's own ordinance. Does that pertain just to like, you're gonna cut trees because they're diseased or falling down in your, in the shoreline? Because we don't wanna do the harvesting. We don't wanna do the harvesting. It goes to the state. That must be bad, then.
The harvest permits from the state?
Like where are, I'm not supposed to. I sent him to the state, in case he wants to go, they always, they always have to go inspect to make sure they're following the rules.
Even the state permit that he has, he has.
He used to.
I don't think that'd be a forest ranger's responsibility, but.
I don't know if they actually come out and check or not.
No, certainly.
Bill Kennedy used to go and inspect everyone, but.
Good, well. Oh, okay, yeah, I, I mean, I have the rules. I don't, I do follow them. It's unusual to. Thank you. For clarification, I think the tree cutting permit applications should say shoreline zone.
Start with the last one?
Yeah, the last. Is it also wetland? But that's shoreline zone. Oh, the shoreline zone ordinance covers all the, all, yeah.
That's just a clerical thing, right?
Yeah, right, the stream zone, I read that.
Leanne's gonna change it for us.
So on renting, the tables and chairs, it doesn't matter how many, it's a flat for fifty, return, you know, that, just being, basically, you can go to. Oh, this is great.
Notice the only thing that's free that's ever been.
I was just looking at that. You don't, you don't charge anything to that?
No.
Why not?
We could, but it's like the only thing that's free.
What's that?
Notary.
The what?
Notary. Who else does it around here? All the town offices I know, but.
Anita, does she still do it?
All of us, there's a bunch. Leslie Bonas, Laurie Baveno, there's a bunch on, if you look on the list on, online, it'll list them all.
Is there any risk by doing it?
Oh, yeah.
So why wouldn't we charge?
We have to go to court once in a while.
That's what I mean, so why wouldn't we? It's a risk.
Okay.
We're trying to set up.
To notarize something.
The notarize.
Oh, yes, yes.
Why wouldn't we?
The only thing that's free.
Five bucks. We charge fifteen dollars for a beach sticker, why can't we charge something that actually got risk on us?
It's supposed to.
It's mainly a risk against the notary. I don't know.
Yeah, but intern, it's still on the town. You still work for the town.
Could be, but we're a notary outside of the office too, so I don't know.
I'm good with it.
It's acceptable to give a chat.
It's not a chat.
Like I said, if there's a risk, if there's a risk by notarizing something. I mean, five bucks isn't gonna cover your court costs, but it's something. I would.
We do quite a few.
Yeah, I would. Why not? What would that go to?
Notary.
Notary. I get that, but.
Um, just revenue.
Okay.
General revenue.
We change it to five.
You're gonna vote on it later, but you pencil it in.
Yeah.
Five per document, five per person. Sometimes it's five people that sign one document.
I would say, well, I don't know, every time you.
Per document?
Yeah.
Okay.
Every time you have to click that? Punch.
Hmm, now I can't offer anything for free. Just my good advice.
Welcome to the real world.
Thank you. Just for clarity, I think the ordinance is all except shoreline should say per copy, and shoreline Arizona ordinance should say per copy, because of the reference that they're for copies of the ordinances, and is the free items collection, is that per item?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, okay. I was just saying, you know, if you're gonna use this list year to year, it might be helpful, so people won't have the same question over and over.
Could I ask for an example of a solid waste violation? Like if I find chemicals in it, or?
I would, I'm guessing, but I'm thinking legal dumping or putting.
Body parts?
Something in a black trash bag that shouldn't be in a black trash bag, like paint.
Mainly it's putting out of town stuff in dumpster or.
Yeah, that's why a lot of towns, I think you use clear plastic, plastic bags, so you can't hide stuff.
In talks somewhere, I've thrown on time, paper bag, and it's a clear bag.
Right.
And if your recycling was in that bag, you paid to buy it. So, okay, thank you. That's just, just curious.
Richard?
What constitutes a solid waste violation?
Is there an echo?
He doesn't include, he ignores you. Give him a peanut.
Oh.
We just, we just said.
I just got that.
Illegal dumping or putting something in a black plastic bag that shouldn't be in there to hide it, like paint?
Oh, or paint, like that, okay. We're gonna address this issue you just came up.
I think the issue is right here.
No? I'll tell ya, but then I would wait, this would wait for over thirty minutes, but I'll tell ya, I've been here since oh five, and I don't think that the select board has ever had a legal meeting. And the reason they haven't had a legal meeting is that you cannot hear. You can't hear what the, or what the select board, especially, and especially Leanne, are saying. And we, and I, we, we talked about this once before, and even their openness raising thing, and it said the same thing. And if you can't hear, if people can't hear what is being said, then it's not a legal meeting, then it's not an open meeting.
Can you read?
And I, I can, I know where I can get. For six hundred dollars.
Hearing aid?
Instal.
Yes, he needs a bad, but he'll get it.
In a microphone, just like they use in our R S U ten.
No, I could hear over there.
Five, five of them, one for each of you up there, and one for the audience to you.
Richard.
And, and then I, once we done install, 'cause he would install for that, with the box and everything else, and then I, once we install them, I would ask for a, uh, decision by the select board, that everybody up there is required to speak into them, or every word they say.
Richard.
That, now if you, we should wait till you get the third elected official to decide it, but if you want it, I can contact this fellow, again, and I don't know just how it would be set up, whether he'd come, uh, only to a meeting to do it, or if he'd come any old time, and, and we'd have to make sure we, he, he could get in, but.
Got a question for you, Richard. Have you ever had your ears tested?
No.
Yes, I've had my ears tested, and I've had my brain tested, and you can't listen.
Not your brain.
Like I said, I'm not the only one, and when you get this wrong, half full of the back, the back can't hear, just a minute, the back can't hear, and whoever's listening on that stupid thing can't hear. And you need to have microphones.
Okay.
Yes, uh, and, uh.
Richard. We heard it. We gotcha.
We got.
Okay.
Let's wait, let's wait till the insulation is done. Maybe that will help.
Yeah.
I can't hear a word you're saying, so.
Let's wait till the insulation gets installed. Maybe that'll solve the acoustic problem.
I don't know what, what was it, but all I'm saying is that, if, in order to have an open meeting, you guys need microphones, just like they use in our R S U ten, for the same reason.
All right, point taken.
And, okay, no, that's enough of that, but.
Okay, does anybody else have any questions on this?
Fee schedule.
Fee schedule? Any questions?
We should have a complete fee.
Yeah.
You have whatever you mean, Dominique.
Did you say something, Leanne?
I think he heard that.
Mo?
I, I have had an instant like that, and I was sitting up back, and I also repeated a question that already began to just before me, and your response was, I think you need hearing aid.
Was he agreeing with me, or?
Yeah.
No, I, that's why I, why I set up the flash, because my hearing isn't all that great, but I can hear you.
Well, I have a voice in the town, which is easy to be heard, and I can hear male voices much better than I can hear female voices.
Richard, it's all right. You're, you're, don't have good hearing.
I can't hear any of it. You don't, I don't have one.
I see those applications. I just can't remember the applications for women instructor.
Did you look through all of them?
Right, well, that's what me, but, but, uh, we need myself. I don't, well, I'm unable to, when he went on. The R S U ten has microphones for some good reason.
So you have to sign, sorry.
I think I did, didn't I, the other day when I was in here? Leanne, did I sign this the other day when I was here?
I can hear you.
So did you look at it?
Let you talk, let you talk, oh.
I looked through some of these the other day.
Did you?
Yeah. Monday when I was in here. Open my eyes, Jack.
So, just so you know, I get most of the bills ready, the ones I receive, if there's something in there that you don't agree with, you don't wanna pay, just include it in your motion. You don't have to pay everything that's in there.
Yeah. Oh, man, my A D D is gonna kick in.
Oh, are they upside down? I have a clip if you wanna fix it with this clipper.
Ah, it's all right.
Now, the ballot clerks, I don't know if you're looking at this last week, but five of them volunteered in time, so.
Okay.
Leanne, was it, was she your?
We have to vote it tonight. It was approved at town meeting, but we have to vote on it.
Okay, 'cause we got another application. Boy. It's pretty tough.
Did you see my email? Well, did you see the email that Scott Nelson sent us?
Yes.
Okay, I talked to him this morning, so. Oh. You know who that is? That's the one we talked about.
Yeah, um, he's familiar with that person?
Uh, yeah.
I guess he was at the school board meeting.
He was at the school board meeting?
Oh, yeah.
You were up there with him, and the guy that was up in the back? That's him.
Okay.
Okay. Pretty close enough. Six twenty-seven. Call me to order. Okay, we have to like, lock the chair.
I need more than normally, Kathy will.
I second it.
Ee, ee, mighty mo, it's gonna be it.
Ee, ee, ee.
Okay, pledge allegiance? He's kissing a vote. Oh, yeah.
Oh, you're voting for Kathy?
Yeah.
Get the head of ourselves. We approve the minutes for June third, twenty twenty-five, slutwin's meeting. Did you look them over? Did you?
Um, I did. I just.
Are you comfortable approving minutes that?
Well, let me ask a few questions. I just want a couple of questions. I need to know what's on last night and find out what it was. That was the answer when we talked about the fee schedule. So. Section eight on a new business number, sorry, section ten, the general assistance training. Um, someone from the previous board said they're gonna watch it. Is that, what's the deal with that? Is that something I should be doing?
Yeah.
And when is it? And when is it?
Um, they'll have more coming up.
Okay.
This one's already gone by.
What I figured would be a good idea was, whoever gets elected in the other position, is they will come to you and go over things.
All right, so it's not something I've, that's coming up, it's, it's already gone by, so there'll be more coming around?
Yes.
Yeah, and the state.
I figured it'd be a good idea to have them come out and go over it with us three of us, again, if you have any questions, you ask, and.
Yeah.
They will do that.
I'm good with that. I just didn't know if it pertained, if it was something that was coming up that I need to put on my calendar.
I'll, I'll forward any more to you, but if we get an application, the state is always right there to help you.
Yeah.
Just call them.
Um, everything else I was, I don't have any issue with.
And it's free. It's a free trade.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I'll second it then.
In favor?
So I didn't use the names, but you can just sign down, fill out and cross it out.
Sign below.
That's fine.
You approve warrant twenty-eight, payroll warrants, June fourth, twenty twenty-five, and June eleventh, twenty twenty-five. Second?
Second.
In favor? Okay, reports, anything from IRS 10?
Can you guys sign those before you leave?
Yeah.
Richard?
Yeah, I don't know if you noticed on Facebook, but Buckfield approved the IRS 10 budget. We didn't.
No, we didn't.
No, they didn't, they didn't approve it.
Part of what was on Facebook, they approved it.
Nobody, so, um, well, is Rockville in Mexico?
Well, all I know is I saw it on there, and they, and Buckfield approved it, or maybe somebody was.
The three towns, the three towns, the three towns didn't approve it. Peggy?
When was the most recent time that we actually had a report from our representative on the, the school board?
It's been quite a while, he was submitting a couple, you know, regularly, but then it kind of stopped.
I'll reach out to Chad.
Okay, road commissioners report.
I had that here somewhere, I heard you, but.
Plans for the next two weeks include.
No, I got it somewhere.
Top patching, all portals and paved roads. We will be smoothing the dirt roads soon. Question on greater repairs, question on Pratt Hill project. We will begin working on cleaning and repairing driveway culverts along Town Farm Road.
I do have some things under roads that aren't on the agenda, but salt bids came back from the state and Abcog, and they want a response like next week.
The what?
Salt bids for winter salt. Um, the cheapest one was eastern salt, seventy-nine ninety per ton through the state. You can review this, I didn't, I don't have any copies.
I'm sure it'll go up.
It didn't?
It didn't?
No. I think it's the same as this current year.
It was going to who now?
Eastern salt?
Eastern.
I guess I didn't make copies, but there's, so. So, I thought, oh, damn it, here. Seventy-nine ninety for eastern salt?
For eastern?
Yep.
Is that the only one?
Um, Abcog was higher, eastern salt, they put us in a northern division and it was a little higher.
Right, we've worked, we've worked within a hundred years in the service of this.
So I figured how much we budgeted and divided by seventy-nine ninety, and that's what I can submit.
How do they come up with the price, any idea? Because it's not by usage.
How much, how many times?
Well, how much do they, how do they come up with the seventy-nine ninety? See, I thought it'd be by uses, but it's not, it's all over the place.
Maybe the more you use, the less.
Well, that's what I thought, but look at Hebrew, their rates lower, they use less. Just curious.
So, I don't know, you want to make a decision tonight, yes?
Yeah, we can.
Make a motion, keep eastern salt?
I second.
Vote, favor?
And, Ben, you didn't, you didn't want to look at culverts through Abcog? Um, Ben had a rented agreement sent to the town. And the recent.
They just wanted to have it on hand in case, for some reason you needed it. For some reason, the town needed something, uh, we just like to have it on hand.
But in the recent years, you've rented equipment under your company.
Usually I rent it myself and build it.
So, is it the reason why you had them send this is because last year we?
I was talking with another thing, and he asked if the town would sell in their lease agreement, and I said, no, that's enough to own a building. It's nothing more than, if you don't rent anything, you don't rent.
But it was going back and forth, the town was renting, then you were renting, then, and then it ended with you renting the equipment and just sending us a building.
That's what we thought was worth it best.
So it just says on, it says on here that it's a twelve-ton roller.
Oh, hell no, we, we haven't, yes, I talked to him about renting a twelve-ton roller, but I was gonna, I rent that myself.
Yeah, I think we need to talk to this guy.
So we do it?
I think it was a general thing, it was gonna have its signs, so I think we need to rent it.
Yeah, but.
It's not even made to have that right now.
I would think.
I just saw it covered all their equipment, the way I talked to him.
So this email says that there's a fifteen percent discount if directly rented to the town.
Right, but then we gotta worry about working this home, and so it's up to you guys.
No, I, that's why I'm.
Work's the best, I guess.
Yeah, so.
If, from what I've worked with again, if we just rented ourselves and built a tower.
Yeah, I think that's the best.
I do, I do, if we gotta worry about all that, but, but this does say it's for twelve tons, so I think it's, it's not general, it's specific to what you called about.
I talked to him about a couple different things.
So do we have to still sign this if he's gonna go through it?
No.
You can just hold off now, I didn't send up a white, just kind of cover everything. I don't see it's gonna be renting anything anyway, but. I was talking with him about the available hillbilly, it was greater, and I did ask him if there was any twelve-ton rolls that are available.
Did they have any graders available?
Huh?
Did they have any graders available?
I'll pull this one off.
What's it take, Ben, to get ours on the go?
I don't, I don't think it's gonna take a whole lot, the brake cables need to be fixed and, uh, a few little things, I, I don't know if you want to buy tires for it, I have four humans up there, about half more out there. We need to see the amount of it. That's a big issue, but. I like a little bit smoother, like they act, and I don't want to roll something down, it's a little weak track.
Lights?
Uh, they're pretty rough shape. There's never any lights on it that I know of. I've been running it here for almost thirty years.
When you say lights, you mean like a strobe?
Oh, you bought it in the early eighties, I think we got it eighty-one, so, well, forty years we had it. It's an old grader, it's warm, but it does a good job. I just think the, the school needs to get better, because, you know, you're looking at operators by the fuel.
Okay, road committee report. Everybody here?
I think somebody had a question over here.
Lee?
It's not really important, I just think I had, last year when, uh, we downed, had a rented grader, when the grader came up to my house, I asked the operator, how is this grader? And he said, it's not working out because it's too lightweight, he said, he run into, run into like a, a wing roll of gravel and spin wheels, because, well, it's heavy. Now, I don't know, I'm just trying to throw that in as piece of information for that.
Oh, a little grader, I mean, we, you can get by it, but I don't like it, it ain't heavy enough, it's stiff, so I mean, it's just a small little break.
That's, that's what I was.
Talk about the rental.
You know, I agree, it's a heavy grader, and you want to cut down into things.
Yep.
Definitely, they just don't make stuff up that you should.
Well, it's just a small grader.
Richard's got a question.
Okay. Richard?
What's the situation with the original, with the town grader? Is that unfixable or?
That's who we just talked about, we gotta get some lights put on it and. Yeah.
These brakes, cables.
That, that, I think we can pick that up and. We'll, we'll get it out and make a list of what needs to be done and put this out.
Constable report.
Hold on one second, when can you have that list made now? When can you have that list?
Maybe next slide would be.
Okay.
Constable report. Can you sing, John? All good at the beach?
Yeah.
CEO report.
He did submit one, but it wasn't his normal one for the public, so I didn't.
Yep.
There's a lot of complaints, stuff during it.
We better hurry up to side two on that.
Yeah. So, that's not on the agenda either, is it?
Yes, appointments.
Okay.
Somebody has a question.
Mom?
When, when you done, uh, when you done reading?
Yeah, that's alright.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, uh, I filed a complaint because, I think it was, one twenty-one, I could be wrong, uh, one twenty-one Berry Road, uh, there was a trailer down by Turner Brook, at the bottom where I live, and I think, I just want to verify with, with, we had that Berry Road, does anybody know, who needs to know, in the town, that that's a four-rod road, not a fifty-foot right away?
That survey that you submitted?
Yes.
The surveyor wasn't a hundred percent sure on there, so.
Well, he got that information from, uh, uh, he got that information from the county commissioners, whatever record it was, giving the book and page, okay? And I know, I'm pretty positive, that's a continuation, but when, when the pond was used for a mill, a Teague's Mill, okay? That was a main road that went through there, up by my house, to the Decoster Four Corners and continued on, uh, Mahoney Road, which, Mahoney Road is a, an old county road, it's a four-rod road. Now, why would the town, in its infinite wisdom, ever have a four-rod road on Mahoney Road from Decoster Four Corners, intersection of, of, uh, Bay Mountain Road and Pratt Hill Road? Why would they just have it there and not, because when the town, back in the eighteen fifty, or whatever, when this road was established, before they had really two nineteen going through there, why would they have, uh, fifty, fifty foot right away, and then all of a sudden have a four-rod road? And this is what, when I had my land survey, he came up with, he got a record that said that this was, pretty sure that was a four-rod road. Now, the only reason, because I filed a complaint, because I did it, because it was variance, I had a variance, okay? So, I just want to be sure that, somebody ought to do some research, because the house it was just, or is going to be built, that's the only one that I know that's within that right away, because I had to have a seven-foot, but variance, because I thought, hey, I'm doing what's right, and I just want to be sure that if the CEO or anybody else questions that, that it's going to be a four-rod road.
I will do the research, I just haven't had time. And I'm not gonna, I will do the research, I just haven't had time. I just want to see for sure.
Yeah, absolutely.
Planning board report, you see?
Oh, planning board, yes, I wanted to mention that it was last June that, uh, the, the, uh, the June fourth select board meeting, it was brought up from the planning board that, uh, the planning board, uh, would like to have, uh, the, the CEO review all non-residential applications until a site plan review ordinance is approved. And I want to make sure that gets forwarded to the next CEO, I don't know how soon we're gonna have another CEO. And additionally, since this was mentioned a year ago, to have the ordinance committee do a site plan review ordinance, we would like to put that on the list of ordinances to be done with the ordinance committee this year, a site plan review ordinance. If you, do you know what that entails?
No, but I hope you explain it to me.
What, what it is, it's a, it's a, it's very similar to a complex ordinance, like this shoreline zone or the subdivision. What it is, is whenever somebody comes to the CEO and wants to build anything other than a dwelling, a house, like a business or, uh, you know, some other kind of land use that might impact the, the quality of the town, it allows us to analyze things like the lighting, the parking lot, and the rainwater runoff, the, uh, you know, any screening from the street, if it's gonna be an eyesore, that type of thing. There's a whole long list of things that are looked into to see what they're actually planning to do, you know, like noise pollution, light pollution, you know, pollution from whatever kinds of materials they might be using, because we have nothing to regulate business in any way, shape, or form. And, so we had asked the planning board to have the ability to look at things until we have an ordinance. Nothing has come to us. A good example is the solar ordinance, it finally didn't get, so that's the only thing we have to regulate any kind of, of business-type thing at all. So, this, Sumner has one, it was recommended to have one in the nineteen ninety-two comprehensive plan and the two thousand eight comprehensive plan, so I'm not bringing up a new idea, I'm just saying that maybe it's time to actually do it.
Okay. We gotta, it's on the agenda to give the ordinance committee a work list. It's on the agenda at the end to give the ordinance committee a work list, so I'll add it to it at the end.
Ad hoc planning committee.
Well, I could, I could speak for that.
Good.
Okay, I'm the secretary of that committee, and the, um, the history of that committee is that, at that same meeting a year ago, in June, I brought up that we really need to review the comprehensive, to review the comprehensive plan, to update it. And that was mistaken to me, that to restart the comprehensive plan review committee. And that was probably because people were not aware of what that ordinance stands for, which was to look at the two thousand eight plan and see the recommendations and monitor the progress of instituting the recommendations. So it took months to actually get the committee formulated. My only recommendation was to formulate according to the membership, not according to the duty. It was just an example of how to formulate a membership. And then once the committee finally met, they realized that their second meeting, we were not there to review the two thousand eight plan and recommend what wasn't done on it, we were actually to redo a comprehensive plan. So, there's nothing in any of the select board minutes that state what the ad hoc committee's supposed to do. The day, the year, the day that it was, um, the membership was appointed to it, it just said that it was going to be an ad hoc planning committee, there was no definition of what it was gonna do, what it was gonna accomplish, and what its task was, anything about it. It seemed to me, as, as a person who's been spearheading this for well over a year, we understood it was the similar committee, but with the task was to. we understood it was the similar committee, but with the task was to get the data and update the plan. So, um, we don't know the status of the committee, because I assumed we were following that course, but now there's some feedback that I made an error, assuming that we were following that makeup plan, and apparently we're not, so I'm, I'm gonna be according to Leanne, I don't know.
So, is this what we spoke about yesterday?
Yeah.
So, the way, the way I understand it and the way Peggy explained it to me, is it should, the committee should have members from, um, ordinance, planning board, select board, road committee, road commissioner, and so on.
Why?
Cause that's what it said in the.
We didn't follow the comprehensive plan ordinance?
On the, was it March fourth minutes? That's where it said it?
Right, right, right.
In the March fourth minutes, that's where it said it.
The same members of the or, committee formulated according to the ordinance were transported to this ad hoc committee.
No, they were not. Not all of them.
Well, it's, the exception of you, because then the ad hoc committee said that they can't, you have to be resident of the town.
Right, so we're following the ordinance with ad hoc committees. And they added other people, they added Jack Casey, they added.
So, he's the only one that I saw that wasn't on the board, and that's what I told Peggy, I don't know how.
But he was recommended even before the ordinance committee met. I mean, the, the one according to the ordinance met, because I personally suggested that we needed somebody with the expertise from the water bodies. I had no person in mind, I was just looking for somebody of that role.
That doesn't mean matter anyway, because that ordinance has been repealed.
Which ordinance is that?
Comprehensive Plan Review Committee ordinance.
When was that repealed?
Wasn't it appealed at town meeting?
No, that was not the review committee ordinance that was repealed. It was the, the clause in the, oh, I don't.
Yeah, cause you asked for that line to be removed from the planning board ordinance.
See, you're, you're confused between an ordinance and a line in an ordinance.
No, I'm not.
No, the line in the, the planning board ordinance was repealed, not the Comprehensive Plan Review Committee ordinance.
I, I didn't understand that it was repealed.
Well, I don't, I don't remember, I can't.
I thought that, I thought that article failed.
Did that article pass or fail? Leanne.
I don't have my minutes there over there. I thought it passed.
I thought the warrant passed, which meant that the commit, the planning board no longer has any responsibility to the comprehensive plan.
No, that did not pass, because you argued against it.
Right, so it did not.
It did not pass.
Oh, good, so we still, we still have.
Even though you wanted it on the.
Well, I was very conflicted.
Let me go get my minutes.
But.
Was supposed to be, but.
No, but then, that failed, over.
This is why I'm confused.
The planning board, that would've failed.
So, yeah.
Okay, so the plan, well, I mean, that was where I got the original idea that the planning board has something to do with comprehensive plans, because I read it in the ordinance.
According to my notes, the town voted to repeal the revised comprehensive plan.
Yes. But, did, did that, did it repeal?
They voted to repeal.
No, no, that's the comprehensive plan, not the, not the planning board ordinance.
Oh, the planning board ordinance, okay, sorry, that did not pass.
Oh, it didn't, okay.
Yeah, so the planning board is an overarching.
So, we are still supposed to be.
By who sets up what happens with the comprehensive.
So, then why do you have an ad hoc committee that has other?
We don't, who knows, it's very. Well, and did I not hear, just the other day, sorry, I'm about to order.
Go ahead.
Didn't I just hear the other day, uh, somebody said that, uh, that would be, said that, uh, members of the comprehensive plan committee, because it was Ed, uh, were only appointed for one year, so everybody would have to be reappointed.
Yeah, so.
That's what I heard said.
So, when she comes back out.
Well, it's, it was very confusing, I mean, I, that's why I assumed that since two members of the select board were no longer on the select board, they were no longer on that committee, because that was the original makeup of the committee.
I think it can still be on the committee.
No, no.
They can be, they can be in the.
So, anybody in town, if that's the case.
Yeah. Right.
Well, then we need to re, re bam the whole idea.
Let's, let's let Leanne come back in the meeting minutes, but.
No, but.
It's my understanding from what I read in the administrative ordinance part two, that ad hoc committee is a temporary committee until the purpose of the committee is completed. So, there's no one year limit.
Well, that was my.
Hold on, let's let. It wasn't, it was, it was voted down.
Comprehensive plan was repealed.
It was, but the planning board wasn't.
Right, and I thought we were gonna vote on the comprehensive plan review committee ordinance.
No, it was not the review committee ordinance, it was the planning board, the planning board ordinance.
It was the committee ordinance.
It was the planning board ordinance.
No, it has its own ordinance.
Is the planning board ordinance amendment pass or fail?
Failed.
Failed.
Because you argued against it.
Right.
Okay.
The reason I got my hand up is there's confusion between two committees. One was a comprehensive plan review committee. That committee was supposed to be the select board, chairs of all, uh, committees, lords.
And that's correct. That's what I read on March fourth minutes.
But that is completely different from a comprehensive plan committee.
This is an ad hoc planning committee, the selectmen appointed who they wanted on it.
But, right, but they.
An email from MMA Legal saying it's perfectly legal, they can't fail.
So, hold on, hold on.
Ad hoc committees are supposed to be temporary to address an emergency.
No, not an emergency, a project.
Well, a.
A project, right, Leanne's.
If you look up what an ad hoc committee is in law journals, it is for something that needs immediate attention. Like, you had an ad hoc committee for Pratt Hill Road, because that was an immediate concern. This is not an immediate concern.
Can, I, I read that.
It was the proper use of that.
Wait, hold on, can you, when was this committee, when did the selectmen appoint this committee? Can you find that out for, you don't do it now?
No, it should be written on that list of committees.
March, March, it was March third.
But in order to remove a person from a, any committee, you have to go through a process, due.
March fourth.
What is it called? Yeah, due process, you have to have a hearing, a reason, you can't just remove people from committees.
Well, you can in the instance that they no longer hold the position that they had. If I were no longer chair of the solid waste committee, I would not be part of the comprehensive planning committee.
Yes, she would, because it's an ad hoc committee, not ad hoc.
That's why it's inappropriate to have it ad hoc, there's a misunderstanding of what ad hoc.
The only reason they had ad hoc committees, because Peggy argued so much about the comprehensive plan review committee.
No, Darren, Darren, it's not, I've read, I, I.
November twenty-four.
Okay, hold on, hold on, Dave's got a question.
I'm gonna ask the chair to try to keep the meeting in order, if people raise their hand to talk, instead of having ten people talking.
Back and forth.
So.
November twenty-four.
November twenty-four, so, I'll get back to this, we'll look into this further. November twenty-fourth, that was the selectman's meeting?
Yes, that's when they were appointed, November nineteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Okay, should we go on?
Peggy's got one more question, one more.
I just wanted to restate again, the planning board's intention was never to reformulate the, uh, comprehensive plan review committee. It was only to formulate a comprehensive plan committee following the membership listed for that committee. That was the only intention, never to do the review committee, and the select board did not seem to understand that.
Good.
Of that, well, they, they did their own thing, for that.
Okay, ordinance committee, anything? No, good thing. Fire warden report? Nothing?
But you will be seeing him next week, so.
Yeah, yeah. Treasury report.
I have the bank statements, um, we should have most of our bills paid for the next meeting, except for bulky waste. This is our bank statement, I usually have one of my deputies review it, but they haven't yet. Just checking, and then we have some trust funds, I just wanna show you where the interest is, because this is the reason why I know. This is the interest we earned for the month of May.
Okay.
This is our balance at the moment.
That's what I have here, right? Yeah.
Yeah.
Good.
We can talk through it, there's un, outstanding checks and.
Outstanding checks, that what you said?
Yeah, on the second page, I have one that I have to deal with, you lost it, that first one.
Let me initial it, I'm here.
We did purchase screen door, um, we got the grant for the chairs and the, the mats. We should be refunded that, for that, as soon as I show her the invoice.
Cemetery committee? Nothing? Solid waste committee report?
Solid waste committee has gotten a, have a meeting for two months due to lack of forum, and we need members. And it's not a big burden, we meet once a month, we write things for Harper News, we have the buy nothing weekend, and we may bring in people from Harper, Harper to Extension to try to have some informational meetings.
So, uh, sorry, I didn't.
No, so not a big burden.
I don't know if you were here yet, but we just witnessed the recycling and the regular trash going to the same truck outside the building right here tonight. So.
That's happening in the past, but sometimes they bring it to the other truck.
But they're throwing it in the compactor truck, is that, is that correct? It was in the compactor, right?
I was sitting right here, right beside him.
Right here?
Yeah.
No, cause the, I saw the recycling truck come earlier.
He reached into the big green garbage can out there with the lid, pulled two bags out of there, threw it in the truck, and then proceeded to load all the recycled stuff in. None of the recycled stuff down one forty has been picked up for twelve years now, but it went in the same truck. I trashed on something that hadn't even been picked up, and it's been out there since, since last night.
Mine too, they just came.
Dave?
So, recycling has not been picked up on that end. And that's usually the first, they start on that end, and then on church street, and it's still sitting there.
I think they, they went up that side and came back, they just came through here.
Lee?
I came up from Upfield, uh, around about three o'clock, and, uh, and then it pulled over, and we just stopped in the little road, the U-Haul truck.
Yeah, they're using U-Haul, I know that, but, I'm not sure what they're using it for, but I know they are using it.
Well, they're picking up trash, they stop.
There's a garbage truck getting out.
Sometimes they do.
Any other question on that?
Any?
No, no question, I'm just gonna say the recycle truck was up there on Church Street this morning, but they were heading towards Ken, as I was pulling hands, so.
Okay.
Maybe they're doing a route different now.
The, um, the new project, um.
Owner?
Project manager, and, can't think of the word, she came into the office this morning, naturally Dave was there.
For Archie's?
Yeah.
Or whatever they're called now, the Swarachies?
Yeah, and we talked about the dumpsters around town that haven't been taken away, and talked about bulky waste, it may take a few days to get all the bulky waste picked up. And I tried calling her twice, and I left your message about the trash, just wondering.
Do they have, and they may, I don't know, do they have a route that they're, cause my fear is we're gonna have, they're gonna pick up on one side of town on Thursday, not get to it all, and people are gonna think that they have time. What's their route?
I don't know what their route is.
So, okay, you know, you see I'm getting out of that? I'm just worried that people are gonna.
Put up twice.
Twice, yeah, exactly. How do we monitor that?
Teresa?
I'm concerned, because ever since we've gotten this new company, I mean, my recycle bins have been removed. I mean, I put my trash out first thing in the morning, on Tuesday, I'm up there, it's ten, eleven, twelve o'clock, it hasn't even been picked up yet. Neighbor's dog getting in, I gotta clean the whole ditch up, and it's just.
Yeah, I've, I've seen it too.
I've not been satisfied with this.
But it, to be fair, it's happened prior before the new one as well. This isn't, it's just worse now, in my opinion. Paulie's.
Paulie?
They really need to establish a route, because you never know if they're gonna come. I've had it at my house, uh, almost quarter six in the morning.
Does she have a route?
And like I said, it's still sitting here now.
She's working on it, I sent her a map of the town, a list of route names, she asked questions today, maybe they haven't.
So, once, once she has a route, can we post it on wherever, the Harper page?
I can try to get it, but they've always said put it out the night before, get cut.
No, I get that, I don't, I don't, yeah, I.
I would prefer not to have to put my trash out the night before. Too many animals out there, and it begs the question.
A cover, a cover, a cover.
It's gotta come up, bears can, took that off, no telling.
All right, let's go.
Okay.
Cassie says she puts dog food beside the trash, so the animals go.
Bitches.
It seems to me that several select board meetings ago, didn't we have a fellow from Archie's come over?
Yeah.
And talk to us? And did he have anything to say about routes, or?
I guess when you, I guess.
I know that, that they, they say that, that they'll come anytime after five AM. But, I, I agree that they, they just come any old time they seem to want to. And I think it might be worthwhile for the select board to have a talk with this guy again, and see if they, if he can, now, Leanne says they have new drivers, a lot of new drivers, and so that may be part of it. But I think the select board should have a talk with this fellow at Archie's, and tell him all of this, and see if we can't establish routine pickup.
So, let's let, let's let the women.
So that we know, so we know approximately what is coming.
The woman that came into town office today, you said? She's gonna cover the route, let's let the route get established, see how that works, and we'll go from there.
It's getting better.
All right, all right, just, just so that, you know, did they come in at six o'clock in the morning, or are they coming at six o'clock at night?
I'm just happy if they come.
Yeah, you gotcha.
Okay, anything on the recreation, recreation committee?
Nothing to do, we have our, um, dinner on the nineteenth of July, uh, chicken broccoli alfredo with dessert, bread and salad, and then games and karaoke.
No, good. Okay, uh, we changed the open session from the bottom of the page, the agenda, and we moved it up. So, if anybody wants something to say, you don't have to wait through the whole meeting to have what they want to say. Here, Richard?
I would like to recommend, and I don't know how it's working tonight, obviously, but I would like to recommend that we discontinue all, well, discontinue all, go with Zoom instead of YouTube. And that way, the lot, the, the Zoom may cost a few pennies, but it's not that much. And on Zoom, if I'm sitting at home in the middle of one of those reasons, and I don't wanna come to the, get my chair and come down to the meeting, I can raise my hand and answer questions from home, you cannot do that on YouTube. And, and plus the YouTube, I don't know how it's working tonight.
It's working somehow.
But, 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 but I think Leanne will agree, that the past eight or ten meetings, half the time it hasn't worked, or hasn't worked at all, or it's been, um, is that?
Oh, it hasn't been eight or ten.
What's that?
It hasn't been eight or ten.
We stopped jumping to Zoom too.
Well, you got nothing to do, then, tomorrow morning, so.
And so I would like to, the select board, I would like to recommend to the select board, that we go back to Zoom. That's my recommendation.
Okay.
Dave?
Okay, um, we approve a roadmap budget year after year, while continuing to push drainage and water management. Responsibilities under residents without notice, consent, or legal easement. This practice forces private landowners to bear the burden of a town's poor planning and failed infrastructure at their own expense. For us, it's been tens of thousands of dollars of home property threatened due to management illegal practice. The town's water has caused over a hundred thousand dollars to home and property. To fix the ditch the town is trespassing and using to dump their water without an easement, permission, let alone a conversation, will cost a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to fix. I know even you're unaware of this because your lawyer chose not to share that with you to vote on. What protection is in place for this budget? Will it make things different? No plans, no discussions, nothing?
That's a Superior Court complaint. Cannot discuss it.
Yeah.
Sorry.
I think Ben had his hand up first.
Ben?
Yeah, the problem up there that you have is your neighbor next door filled his property and pushed the water all over on you. It's not with the town.
Ben?
I don't think we're supposed to discuss it. It's between the lawyers.
Peggy?
I just wanted to mention, not about that particular issue, but in reviewing the wa, water resources of the town, it's become apparent that there are kinds of issues that need to be addressed in some kind of format that we will work, look at and the comprehensive plan because not everything is covered under Shaw and Zoni.
Okay.
Dave?
Yeah, Alan, you're talking about the property of Sampson's Block?
The Paul Ricard deal and the trouble.
Yeah, and that was done in two thousand four when you were the road commissioner?
Two thousand six.
And apparently it was ditched up onto private property. And it was reverted into that area.
Can't, can't talk about it.
We can't talk about it.
It's in court.
Pardon?
It's in, it's, it's a court case.
It's a court case. We can't.
Yeah, I hear you just a little sorry. I'm a little down.
It's in Superior Court. We can't talk about it.
Can't discuss it.
Yeah, it is. Well, he just said, and he just devised what the truth is. I just wanted to clarify because...
No, I'm telling you the truth, Brian.
Pardon?
I said, I'm telling you what the truth is.
Guys, hey, hey.
Hey, you guys.
Ben?
I didn't put the water over there. That water's been running there for a hundred D's.
You guys, you're gonna have to go outside if you're gonna talk about it. You're not gonna talk about it in here.
Well, I do.
Maul?
Can you, uh, explain to me, I, I don't know the situation, but depending on the right of way, uh, the width of the road, you know, that goes beyond the ditch on both instances. Okay, so I believe the town has a right to, what, somebody may, I don't own through the tire of the road. I own, I can use it, but I do not own it. The town has a right to go within that right of way.
There, there's guys that are way smarter than, and there's, there's people that are way smarter than us that are fighting this in court right now, so we can't talk about it.
Sorry?
Is there anything else? Bitchin?
I just wanna see it written down about the micro.
I already wrote it down. I got it on my list.
Thank you.
Yep.
Nothing else? Okay. Calendar reminders. Planning Board subdivision site visit six nineteen twenty-five, ten AM, Green Acres Road. Swim lessons signups will be six twenty-one, nine AM at the town office.
Can you hold on a second? Dave, did you get your answer to your email you sent yesterday about the, you got it?
Special Selectmen's Meeting on six twenty-four, six PM for employee reviews.
Is that executive session or is that open?
Executive.
Executive.
Executive session only. Okay, thank you.
Peggy?
For the next one, the planning committee, would this select board please specify what that committee's supposed to be planning and what their duty is? It's never been specified.
You mean the ad hoc planning committee?
Yes. What is their duty? What are they supposed to be planning? It has never been specified.
So, this goes back to what we talked about earlier?
Yes.
Isn't it reviewing...
Let me, like I said, let me look into those meeting minutes on the twenty-fourth.
Our next meeting is next Tuesday.
We have no comprehensive plan anymore. Just keep that in mind.
It's to review it, isn't it?
Is it to review what?
Two thousand eight?
No, it's to write the new one, I thought.
Ninety-two?
My understanding is to write the new one, yeah. So, it's, it's to write the new comprehensive plan. That was my understanding.
Right.
Not to review the two thousand and eight.
So, should the meeting from next week be postponed? Do we know what our duty is or what the situation is?
So, how many, just bring it to speed. How many times have you met and what have you done in those meetings?
Okay, so we first met in January. It's supposed to meet in December, but the snowstorm interfered. And we first looked at the, doing a survey of the community before anybody reviewed what our actual task is and what we have to cover for information. And so at the second meeting, people started to understand that our task was to review all these different content areas like natural resources, economy, housing, etc., and get up-to-date data. And then review with the new data, look at the old plan, see what, what has been done and not done, and see if we need new goals and new means to accomplish them. So, when the people understood that that's what we're supposed to do, which I understood a year ago, was that we were not a committee to, um, review the two thousand and eight plan. We're actually a committee to update the plan with a new plan to submit it to the state for approval.
That was my understanding.
So, the ad hoc committee, if you read the notes from that meeting, always said they, they wanted an add-on committee and appointed membership, but it never described what this planning committee was gonna do, even what they were gonna plan. So, it would be nice to know what, you know, have this one to tell you what they're supposed to plan.
So, my understanding was to write the new comprehensive plan.
Yes, but that's never been stated specifically, so you're stating...
I'm stating that.
Okay, you're stating now, okay. Thank you.
Do you agree, Kathy?
Yeah, I agree.
So, hold on. Does that solve our issue from earlier or do you still want me to look into that?
No, it doesn't solve the membership issue because...
All right, I'll look into that, all right.
That's Leanne's concern.
Okay, yeah.
And that's why I sent you a list of the recommendations of who should be on a planned committee.
I'll, I'll deal with that, so.
That's why.
So, as long as you can still meet next week, we're good, right?
Okay, yeah, well, I, I, hey, I have the minutes and I have a plan for that.
Perfect.
We'll see.
Okay, Solid Waste Committee, meeting number six twenty-five at six thirty. Unfinished business. Town hall improvement contract approval?
Look, I got something to say.
Well, I, I put it together in two different ways.
I saw that.
Up to you. Um, once you sign and make a motion to approve the contract, I'll send it to the state and we will get a check in four to six weeks.
So, one question I had. And I don't know if it matters, but the address on here says somewhere, I thought, I thought I saw it somewhere.
Oh, she has a PO box.
PO box.
Okay, all right. It didn't match the contract. Good.
We can write your PO address on it.
So, I don't know what you guys, I wasn't at the last meeting. Did it, does it matter? Did they have a preference or...
They requested upfront deposit for each...
Okay, so one of the...
So, we just gotta figure prepayment?
Yeah. I think this is wrong. You had twenty-eight thousand dollar deposit. I think it's supposed to be eighteen.
Um, there's two different ones.
Because of the cost of the materials upfront was more than I thought.
Right, but the, on the contract, well, on, on the bid you sent, eighteen thousand dollars down at the time of signing the proposal for the first one, and the second one was ten thousand dollars down. You have twenty-eight thousand dollars down and ten thousand dollars down on the prepayment one. You see what I'm saying?
No.
Right here. You have twenty-eight and ten. Shouldn't it be eighteen and ten, according to, according to what they said here?
All right. The remainder of twenty-seven to be paid?
Yes, 'cause that would bring that up to twenty-seven, not seventeen, because of the prepayment.
This is the remainder. We're gonna pay at the end.
Yeah, this is, this should be the down payment on the first one, down payment on the second one. That's the remainder of both.
Okay.
Does that make sense? 'Cause that's what it says on here. I didn't know if something was changed in the meeting.
Okay.
Dave?
Is the initial down payment more than one-third?
Um...
The windows ain't gonna work hard because of the cost of the doors.
It can't be more than one-third.
Unless it's cost of material.
Look at state law.
Gordon over here.
Lee?
Yeah, I just wanna, I just wanna speak up for our one historic building that we're really maintaining. And I understand that there's a great concern. We need to save energy by getting rid of these windows, but these windows were entirely rebuilt by Bob Berry when he was our maintenance guy. They've all been taken out, had carefully glazed and everything else. The problem with them really now is that they enroll them and have the statues being attached and they're ultimately closed just fine. My personal feeling is, and I'm pretty, pretty passionate about this, the main problem with, with efficiency in here with these old windows is that we have some nineteen-sixties era aluminum storm windows, going in or up and down here. I personally feel is that we have some decent storm windows put on here and we can keep different, it's historic form with the windows that were put in here in nineteen twenty, so they've all been completely built at town expense because, because our employees did this, and they're all aged nicely and glazed nicely. I just think, I just think it's a shame to consider taking them out.
I need another ten.
Richard?
I second what Lee said. Lori's wrong. I think it's a mistake.
So, twenty-eight.
Yeah, not maybe mistaken, correct.
All right.
Okay. I'm, I'm not sure. I'm gonna go back to what Dave said. I don't, I don't know if that's true, Dave. I don't doubt you, but I know the company I work for, we do half-down on some projects.
I don't see it.
You did find it? Hold on, Richard. What, what is it?
In main for home construction and repair contracts, exceeding three thousand dollars, the maximum down payment allowed is one-third of the total contract price.
That's home.
This lim, this limitation is stipulated in the main home construction contracts law.
That's...
There's no provision in there about materials or anything like that.
That's home.
Peggy?
I would say that that's home, but I just, I wanna have another comment about that issue is that I had said to Susan before she did not get re-elected that Ross Anthony is the Buildings and Energy Efficiency Analyst, Analyst for the State of Maine, that maybe the buildings should have an energy analysis to find out where the loss is rather than just assuming that the losses from the windows or something in the basement. That's all I was gonna say.
Richard?
Is it imperative that you sign a contract tonight?
That was my question.
The way this is, a town hall improvement contract approval, does that mean you have to sign a contract tonight?
To get the money, you have to have a signed contract.
Or can, or can you postpone till you get a third select room and, and discuss it some more?
We got this as a grant, right?
When's the grant run out? When do we have to do it? 'Cause I wanna look into what Dave's saying.
I think it has to be spent by twenty-six...
Uh, this month?
No, 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 year.
Oh, year.
Pretty sure. Um, how good are bits?
Lee?
Yeah, well, I would like to make a suggestion.
Guys, hey, quiet.
I'd like to suggest that the amount that's needed would change if, in fact, you were to look at this project, keeping in mind what I just said. If we get rid of the nineteen-sixties era aluminum storm windows that won't even open and close anymore, that the, the price overall would change dramatically. I understand that is, is, uh, you're for the change, and I know you're good at that kind of stuff, but, but my thinking is that the cost of the overall project would change enough so that the amount that is needed for a deposit would change as well.
Leanne?
I just wanted to say that the board of selectmen did accept her bid.
Well, that was my question. Where the bid's already been accepted, it's just a matter of how we do it.
Sign it.
Yeah, so, but we don't have to sign this until I can research what Dave's saying as far as the deposit, correct? How, how long is your bid good for?
Depending, some material, we get closer fifteen days, but I think I could have thirty, so.
So, this was dated?
I had that very much in there.
All right, so we have another meeting before then.
Paulie?
July first.
July first.
I would like to recommend that we have an energy audit done before we do any of the other stuff. Let's find out where we're losing energy, be, whatever.
So, like I, like I said a minute ago, I don't disagree with you, but this has already been proved, so it's not a matter, we can't reject it. We have to just figure out...
You can't reject the bid if it's in what happens with it.
Nah, no, 'cause then they have to revisit it. All right, one more.
Richard?
I think Paulie's right, and I think that we should have that audit done, and I think the whole project should be reconsidered before signing a...
I need to make a motion to table this for July first.
We've already signed a contract, okay with Gail.
So, guys, hail, what's your name?
Gail.
Gail.
Yes.
Do you mind if I table this till our July first meeting so I can research what Dave's saying?
Not at all. I have it scheduled to tentatively begin in August if possible. They did sign the paperwork, but we're flexible and just let us.
Okay. I make a motion to table it to July first meeting.
We did write some ideas on the ecosystem energy conservation.
A second.
We had found identified.
Thank you.
A second.
Until July first, is it?
Yeah. Did you send, is that the link you sent me, Dave? Yeah, okay.
Sorry. Yeah, we sent it to Kathy.
Good.
Okay, new business. Swim instructor, new hire.
Hello?
Yeah.
Erin, I don't think you were here last year when I was hired. I put me through WOSI class in my third class. I've been doing that since I was about sixteen. My co-instructor got my third certified, but she's trying to do July night, so she can't teach with me this year. Maria Nockis is a coworker with mine from Hebrew Station School. I think the town lawyers said that with my certifications, I couldn't have anyone assist me. So, I picked Maria because she's a first grade teacher. I know her. She's great with kids. I knew she could fill in for two weeks and help me out, but town select board hadn't met her, seen her. She put in an application with me, and so we're here to say hello.
Great, good, thanks. Nice meeting you.
So, it's up to you to whether or not to hire her.
That's what I'm... That's why I make a motion to re-hire, what's her name? Maria?
A second. I'll favor.
The punch woman.
Then you get paperwork.
Do we spill your coffee, Richard? Cradle improvement.
You're looking at Spanish for us.
Did we get any bids on that?
Yeah, two bids. I mean, it's ready. I'm in today.
Thank you, they'll put me a sharp object. So my concern with this one is reading what the bid spec says. I don't see anything about grinding the pavement on it.
I guess we'll use re-clean.
Yeah, well, you gotta grind it to get re-clean.
Does we call re-clean?
Why is it? Two twenty-five a square yard?
Reclaiming is ready.
That's what you're going to reclaim?
Yes, that's the process in which it's gonna be done.
I don't, so I don't feel comfortable here, I'm trying to be true. This one, this one's T N M, it's not even the brace.
No.
So we have nothing to compare it to.
Well, have you read the company and the amount? Just for the minutes.
So the, we got two bids here. The first one's from Manzers, fine grading earthwork. Um, the re-clean, well, I'll just read the total price. Total price would be seventy-nine, one-twenty. There's a, an option if they need fabric for three-fifty, and an option if they need to put in a French drain for thirty-two-fifty, which would bring the total to roughly eighty-three something. And the second one is Starrett Snow and Landscape Services, and it's basically just, um, there's no set, there's no contract price or total. It's just basically, um, unit pricing. So, I don't, I don't feel comfortable not having something to compare it to. Accepting either. What's your thoughts, Kathy? I've heard, also I've got feedback from someone on the road committee. So, there's doubts of how, how this was written. What's your thoughts?
Peggy?
I'm just wondering if you could read out what the specifications were for the bid, and maybe have the road commissioner comment on what he thinks is about this, since you're not really knowing what you're looking at in terms of how to evaluate it?
So, was this over at the handles? No? Was the bid back? Um, you want me to read the whole bid spec, is that what you're saying?
Well, I, I, I mean, just some, maybe some major...
So basically it was grind from two-nineteen to Mahoney Road. Construct two traveling, which will be nine feet wide and a two-foot shoulder on each side. Uh, provide ditching, shoulder work, geotextile placement, reseating and vegetation, uh, and utilizing flaggers and traffic control. It's pretty, pretty, yeah, generic, basically. So... Doesn't say, I don't believe. Yeah, doesn't say anything about, there is some culverts that I know for sure on that road that have to be lowered. I don't think you had that in your price, right?
There was nothing in there for lowering culverts.
So, I mean, there's, there's a lot of work that still needs to be done on that road that was missed in here. That's my fear.
Lee?
Yeah, I have a question about culverts. Uh, we spent sixty-one thousand dollars last fall, are all the culverts done? Or you say some of them still need to be lowered?
There's at least two that I've been told that have to be lowered. Re, um, Mr. Gammann, you wanna speak at all on this?
Please.
It's up to you. I don't wanna push your spark.
The window profit definitely needs to be done. That's the, that's the hazard. There's only about three feet.
That's right, I figured out about the legs, so...
Uh, there's a couple trees that need to be removed. There's a swampy area, I'm real concerned with reclaim is going to kind of diminish the heavyweight capacity of the road rather than increase it. I'd rather see some more zigzaggy stuff in those areas, the swampy areas. The area where they, they talk about the French drain, I mean, much larger, it's all ledge and then that whole stretch of road is about hundred...
He's got the French drain listed yet?
Twenty feet.
Is an option.
If you're beyond them, twenty feet.
So, my other concern is, correct me if I'm wrong. We have sixty thousand dollars in the summer roads fund right now that is gonna go to general fund if we don't use it before June thirtieth, correct? So, if we push this, which, I don't know how quick we can get this written up, approved, it's probably gonna pull us beyond, and we'll lose that sixty thousand. Dave?
So, correct me if I'm wrong, I thought summer roads went into a reserve account, not general fund?
No, the auditor says you have to vote on that each year.
We get it once and...
I know. And I asked MMA legal when I came back in twenty-one, does this carry over? That was done while I was gone. They said yes, but my auditor said last year, no, you have to vote on this every year.
Well, I guess I questioned the auditor because...
I don't question you.
Well, you're saying, you know, we've always, in the past, anything we purchased in, prior to July one...
Since two thousand eighteen on, while I was gone, it's been done until...
We've always, always done that since...
Yeah, but we voted on it each year.
So, let me, let me step back. So culverts, for example, if we had money at the end of the year, we would buy culverts because we know we can use them.
Makes sense, yeah.
And now we're saying...
Uh, I thought you meant go into a reserve.
Right. That's part of my question, but now you're saying anything we purchase, so if we purchase culverts this month, but we don't use them this month, we can't take it out of this fiscal year, we gotta take it out of next year, right?
No, no, no. That's not what I meant.
Well, you said twenty-three thousand or something?
That's what you're seeing, because that's something you do use in that year. We don't have to prove that we use culverts. Hopefully she doesn't ask me if we use the culverts in her year.
Well, it's the same, same scenario.
We have an other question, we're trying to call it out, so...
Ben, did you have some? Ben, did you have a question?
Oh, I, nothing against the bidders, they do great work. I just, I don't like the bid specs. It, it leaves out a lot of things that need to be done, your ditching and your drainage, uh, culverts being reset down in the ground. I just don't like the bid that came out.
It is very, it is very challenging to follow.
Yeah, that's my biggest concern.
It's likely.
No. I don't know, I don't know who put this thing together, and I, I really don't care, I mean, uh, but I would be willing to donate my time to help the town, to actually drive this road, give the town some ideas on how this thing should be fixed correctly. I don't care if you put it back up to bid, it really doesn't matter, we have plenty of work, we don't need this work, we're, we're close by, we're lucky, so it's helpful to the town. I'd be willing to do that.
Dave?
Yeah, that's a very good suggestion. And if, uh, I recall in the Advoa Bid Committee, we were also going to try to lower the cost by putting Church Street in at the same time. So we reclaim that while we're doing Brad Hill, and we'll definitely get a better price for that stuff as a man, so, you know, they, they gotta come down and get to work. You're gonna get a better price per mile if we go that way, and I, I'd recommend another bid.
So...
My only concern is now we have numbers up to...
Exactly, that, that's not fair.
Ben?
Yeah, I, I think they should be rejected and go another approach. There's a lot of issues there that I need to address. And again, it's something that needs to be covered, and just...
Well, you can put it together.
No, you have to...
I won't, we're only, we're only bidding with some people.
Okay. Lee?
Well, I just, I, you know, I wanted to, you mentioned ledge, and I heard ledge mentioned again, and that was one of the things I remember distinctly last summer, when Vim told us that he could have that ready to pay for sixty, fifty to sixty thousand dollars, depending on whether they had a problem with ledge. But ledge was always, as I recall, ledge was always on the table.
It was. Alright.
Okay, I make a motion.
I remember when you actually were leaving, talking about, I thought the Vim thing was thirty to fifty, was...
Fifty to sixty.
Fifty to fifty.
One more question.
But we're gonna get sixty-one thousand, isn't it?
Okay.
I don't need it for fifty thousand, five feet.
Is there any reason the road commissioner couldn't do it if the bids aren't acceptable?
Would, would you want us to make a motion?
Could I guess?
I would just caution, uh, you travel a slippery slope when you advertise work to be bid, and then you reject it and else.
So...
In the future, just, just so you know, in the future, you're not gonna have other people wanting to come here to do work if you continue to go about your business that way.
No, I get it, but that's, my goal when I ran for this position was to straighten out these specs. And we need guys like you, and this again, and...
I'm more than willing to volunteer my time.
To help, to help write on that build, that actually built roads, to write these correctly. I know exactly what you go through, I estimate, I estimate electrical every day, and if I get a bid spec that doesn't have any information, it's miserable.
Take, take a quick ride across Martin Hill in the morning, see if the roads will still...
So, I know exactly where you're coming from. It's hard to put a price for something without information.
That was just a question, wasn't it?
Yeah.
No, no, and I, first thing, I don't wanna, I've been on the road since four thirty this morning, um, and I don't wanna come to our party at seven thirty if I waste my time. I'm not gonna, if I put a bid in and it's not gonna be, you get heard correctly, then I'm just wasting my time. And my time's more valuable than that.
Oh, what do you mean?
Sorry.
Initiate a form, and I'd love to help the town if they'd like.
Thank you.
And anybody who wants to deal with it, by all means, step up, or play that bit funny online, so, just, just wanna help.
I make a motion that we reject these bids until we... For the two specs back.
In all fairness, though, my number's the only one that's red, so...
Well, no, the other, I can, I can show you this, it was just part of the yard. There was no full, there was no total number of, I don't know.
Well, it was a, they had twelve hundred yards, so, and they're big, so it's, we have that number, it's times twelve hundred.
How do you know that?
Cuz I saw them.
There's nowhere in here that it say twelve hundred yards. You, uh, you're welcome to look at it.
No, no, it's fine.
All it says is grinding in rough grade, two sixty-five a yard, gravel placement forty-six sixty-six a yard, fine gravel, uh, fine grading rolling, seventy-five cents a yard, ditching and seed.
I gave them prices for the grinding and grading, so they can place the gravel, I'm still gonna grind it for them, so... So, take either one you want, huh? I've given them a price to grind because they do not grind. They can place the gravel, and then if you wanted to go fine grade it out afterwards, I gave them a price to fine grade the work after the gravel was placed. And my gravel price is thirty-nine dollars a yard, so I can assure you, my number is cheaper than theirs because my grinding price is cheaper, my gravel price is cheaper. The only thing, the only thing that's up in question upon your bid spec form is ditching.
So if you can just hand out the job to anybody after rejecting, you could pick him.
I could.
Okay, however you wanna go, but I'm all done.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. My number is on that bid form, so if anyone wants to reach out and wants something else, we can add it.
I'll give you a copy.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Just look at that, I didn't see any, it said twelve hundred yards.
They're both in there?
Yeah, all, they're in each one, yeah.
Okay, I guess we got to set a date for special election?
Hold on a second. So, wh- what are we doing about this road now? Did you ever find out the sign cost?
No, I haven't received a bill yet. There, it'll, how many did I order? Probably a couple hundred dollars, it shouldn't be that much, three, three hundred at the most.
And you have, I know you said sixty, but you have the actual amount that's in that account?
It's in your expense.
It is.
I don't know where mine is. It's probably in my budget book from town meeting. So we read at the top of summer roads?
So his total was like eighty, eighty thousand?
Yeah. Sixty, sixty-three thousand?
That's the balance.
Okay.
Minus, I would just call it sixty-three.
So we have roughly sixty-three thousand dollars that we have to use before June thirtieth.
His bid was around eighty thousand dollars total. We got sixty-three thousand.
Eighty thousand dollars, but it didn't include any of the things that need to be done.
Nope.
And, yeah.
Vim, you said you think you could, you could do this for sixty?
That was the first question.
Then you perform with the ledge issue, since things are a little higher, costly over here, but we need to address that ledge issue. If you don't take care of your ledge and rocks in the road, it's gonna be hard to do anything after it's been paved. You know, I'm going in there, I'll brand new pavement, try to do ditch work. The most important thing on that road is taking care of all the drainage and the culverts.
Agreed.
And we come down... And we come down to there, take out at least, put down ten inches of soil, take out all the rocks. Uh, we're gonna bust a tire out to the next container, and the small town road, when we get done with it, we'll be landing back to that, by the tires. It'll be worked right back into what you already had there for material now. So, I'd like you to follow that thing starting next week and get this thing done, so we don't have to listen to it anymore.
It was a new proposal that addressed all of the things that Vim just said.
What do you mean, another proposal that we got tonight?
No.
Kirk Ullin?
Oh, the one, you mean before the, we went out to bid?
Ad Health Committee had a whole infusion of new members, uh, outvoting that proposal.
The big committee creates the big proposal. Vimmy, Al, and Kathy. They're the only ones.
We had two proposals that we looked at.
They're the committee.
And they chose the grinding proposal rather than what Vim was describing.
We need to have two of the next committee to take care of that drainage issue.
To me, either one works good, grinding.
Get this thing done.
So to me, either one, either way works good, grinding, uh.
We've got more than holes here in town, and we, we press the tire right off and work it right back into the material. It works fine.
What if we, if we started, does it have to be finished by June thirtieth?
No.
So if we're still working in that in July, that money can still be used for that road. We just hasn't designated to it now.
No, we have to. We have to spend that money by June third.
So it has to be spent, that's what I'm saying.
But there's not gonna be any legal issues if, because of all this, just handing it to someone else after rejecting bids? Just don't, you gotta look out for the town.
No, I know, I know, um, that's why I was trying to work through this and do it right. More of that person.
At what point, and I'll ask you, uh, at what point does a size, if you broke up the payment into smaller chunks, at what size would, uh, does it begin to frost affect it to pop back up to the top of asphalt? You could ask them.
Yeah, that's, I know.
When they did down at my house, I mean, they were good sized rocks, and they were smaller ones, okay? But if you break them up small enough, I mean, at what size, does anybody know?
Six inches or less.
What's that?
Six inches or less.
No, very good.
Thank you.
Could you check with MMA and they go first, number one?
Good idea.
How long does that take?
You're not meeting again until July first.
I know, that's the problem.
I'm just hoping we can spend the money.
So, I'm.
You can spend it on other things, I mean, just, I don't wanna get sued.
Cause we're not really, we're not really handing it to anyone else, we're handing it to the road commissioner's discretion.
That's your call, just look out for the town.
What's your thoughts, uh, you've been doing this long enough?
Could we discuss the twenty-fourth?
We don't, we don't have a meeting the twenty-fourth, well, we just have.
I already have the agenda.
Yeah. But that's only gives a week to get that road done.
Unless we have a special meeting? After we find out, could that happen? Vim?
Yeah?
Yeah, we're giving permission tonight, as road commissioner, we start on that road next week, and we'll have it done so it can be paved with asphalt. We're just gonna go down to there and do, we're gonna venture on other roads, take care of rocks, water issues, colors, and it'll be ready to pave.
So I was looking through that.
And we'll get this thing done, so we don't have to keep talking about that.
Hey, Richard.
Paul may have that handled, and you didn't see it.
Oh, Paulie.
I forgot what I was gonna say.
Could we check with MMA, MMA, and we have to have a special meeting before that date?
It's gonna be quick.
Huh?
It's gonna have to be quick. My, my thought is, I was looking through that, that manual, that, and I wish I could get it to my truck. There is a section in that that says something about giving the road commissioner the duties. I don't know how it was worded, I forgot.
I'm just, I can see that guy suing us.
You can what?
You can see that guy suing us or complaining or something. But I don't know.
But he just left?
Yeah.
I mean, he flat out admitted that it wasn't written the way it should have been.
Maybe that's a, a good reason to reject them and just accept someone else, I don't know.
What would he have done when he hit that ledge? Paulie?
The, um, on the bottom of your bid spec, when you post it, it says the select board has the right to refuse any bid.
It says it in the manuals.
So what's the big deal? They're in town.
We're just trying to protect the town by refusing two bids and then picking someone who didn't bid for the job. I just wanna make sure we don't get sued or, I don't know.
Leon, the weapons road commissioner.
I know, I know.
All I want tonight is if you give us the okay, well, the only thing we can saddle Pratt Hill and get done.
Richard?
What are we debating and discussing right now, Pratt Hill Road?
Yeah.
And what are we trying to decide, whether we're gonna accept a bid?
We have sixty thousand we have to spend before June thirtieth.
Whether we're gonna turn it over to the road commissioner, can we do that?
We're, we're working through that right now.
I, I would recommend turning it over to the road commissioner.
One, one more.
Richard, do you want to listen to that and hear yourself talk?
I just wanted to give the minor comment. Last year, I started looking at the cost for all the roads we've been paying for the last five years. It seems like we really should get down to the, the baseline and make sure that the base of the roads is stable, so they don't keep doing this, and we have to spend so much every year to fix every single road. So we should actually do a really good base when we go do a complete road, number one. And number two, from the comprehensive plan viewpoint, I've been speaking with Chad Casey about Bear Pond, and he wrote me a long lead, which I just forwarded to you about how bad those, uh, deltas are forming in Little Bear Pond because of Pratt Road not being finished for five years.
That's why I wanna move this along.
Richard, Ricky?
Uh, the town's out here, they're hundred thousand dollars on payment. If you don't have a good basis, you're risking that.
Yeah, I agree.
You've gotta have a good basis.
Yeah, I agree.
Too small.
This proposal does not address the base.
Uh, I'd like to see that though from Chad Casey, uh, Chad Casey, I'm sorry. Because after a rainstorm, there's a lot of water that comes down, I call it fall brook, that comes down through, because there's a little waterfall down on Pratt Hill. Well, that's all brown, okay? Now, what's that doing? That's, when it gets down below Pratt Hill Road color, that washes into that fine silk that's in the brook there. I mean, it's not coming down from, I don't believe you have enough drainage area that comes down, uh, the, the, the ditches off of Pratt Hill to make too much of, I'll even give you seven, five percent, do something with, with the fall brook there. Because Ann, if you look at the time when, when rain comes out of, I call it the holy brook, because it starts a fire in place up there, because of the three beamer ponds in there, that filters that out and becomes clear very quickly. So I don't, I'd like to see the line up from Chad Casey to get, I don't agree with him.
Some brooks going into that fall, that caused a lot more trouble with what the road itself is. And how much banks are caving there into that road?
Lee?
Well, uh, to, just to address what you just said, uh, it was afterward, uh, road committee meetings early on last year, when Wesley Brown said he'd gone down there and taken a close look, and he said that, uh, he stated that he didn't think Pratt Hill Road itself was contributing all that much to the silt problem. Not that there isn't a silt problem, but that it wasn't coming off the road so much, we saw from other sources. And that was, that was in the road committee, uh, reporting to the select board last year.
Three lawyers don't answer any questions we have.
I don't think, from what I read in that, in those ordinances. Paul is exactly right, it says it in there, it says it on the bid spec. The road commissioner has the right to manage the roads through us. I get that guy's point, I totally get it, he's absolutely right. But there's too many variables that he didn't have, and he admitted not to having, to accept it. So.
You could be our way?
I, I, I don't know how we can. My, my biggest thing is, um, this is part of the reason why I made the motion, or amended the motion at the town meeting, was we had this money to spend. If we don't do it, where is that money coming from to fix Pratt Hill Road after, after June thirtieth? Great?
We have the reserves and a little bit of budget.
It's coming out of about twenty-eight thousand, it's coming out, so we won't have any money left to do any other roadwork.
We read, yeah, Leon.
I'm on the next subject, I'm just studying while you guys.
I, I think we're crazy not to use this money to, to Pratt Hill Road, or.
Oh, yeah.
Or we're not gonna have any money to spend on the rest of the roads, the rest of summer.
Can you not turn it over?
You don't need to get that thing done.
What are the targets?
So.
I did have my hand up, I was just saying, you're not turning it over to another contractor, you're turning it over to your road commissioner.
Correct, and I think that's for legal ease.
Richard?
Well, for listening to all the in and out details and everything concerning this, I don't think we should take an outside contractor, and they're not the one that come in here and understand all of that and realize all of that. As well as, uh, in, as well as our in-home road commissioner does.
I, I don't think we should feel threatened by this young man coming up here and saying, well, you know, you reject this bitch, and you reject both bids that came to you when he was part of both in many ways, uh, that we should feel threatened, because there's always somebody out there wanting to work on these roads. My brother does this professionally.
I don't, I don't.
And you're always gonna get contracts, and you're always gonna get hired once. And I just feel, and I've felt this way since last year, when Vim was being put down, he was in the hospital with a heart attack, he couldn't do anything he was supposed to be doing, everything he put on hold for a freeze or whatever the terror was. I, I just feel that we need to go and go.
So I, I don't think it's a being threatened, I think Leon's right, we're just trying to cover our behind.
Right.
Um, but I think from what I, I think from what I read, we're all set. All right, one more, then we're gonna make a decision here.
Okay, so, if he's doing the work and you're doing it, the town pays for the material, and you're just paying for the per man, per labor, per hour, per piece of equipment, right? That's how they end up it. So it's not like he's like getting a bid right here on the spot, he needs to have his job, he's doing it through town time, basically.
What if those prices are cheaper?
We're not gonna get it done in the key, for the moment.
What's that, Leon?
Do it for, just like we have been in the past, we've done miles of roads around here, and let's just do this, and you know me.
What'd you say, Leon?
I was just saying, what if that, the prices are cheaper for Alan?
Exactly what we was gonna do last year, and years ago, we were always ready to pull them out.
Dave Terry has got a question, then we're gonna make a decision here, I'll make a decision.
Dave?
Yeah, Alan, no disrespect, I know you've done that all the way for years and years, but I think what we've been trying to do is trying to get a actual estimate from you. Like you say, you're gonna go over and do Pratt Hill next week, look for school, you got a dollar figure, can you put that down on paper, and say this is probably what it's gonna be? You don't have to be exactly, I'm not gonna hold it to you, but we'd like to see that.
I can put something in there, but I, I know it'll be somewhere around sixty thousand or eight if we don't have to get wet anymore. Uh, someone is a great blast of wet, maybe we'll break that up for the next day with a, with a hammer on that.
This is in that upper section of the plot, is it?
Uh?
This is in the upper section of the plot, is it?
Down in the bottom.
Plot.
Right on the edge of the tie, we're foolish, we want to take that out of there and cut a ditch line in there. It's, you're paying the directors and contractors, you're buying the material, you're getting billed right from whenever we buy the material, and don't go through me and get backed up. It's bought, PX has an account with the town, uh, NADU has a contract, um, all these aggregates has a contract, and they build the town directly, there's no backs.
This town is discount too.
Okay.
All towns in town is a discount.
All right, uh, we're gonna make a motion to hand this job over to the road commissioner. And Vim, if you can write up something, uh, to give us.
I can do that.
Give us more of an accurate thing on paper, that'd be good.
I can do that.
Okay.
And this is gonna be from your personal family business?
Oh, it's gonna be, we need a road commissioner, working as a road commissioner, hiring everybody you need to get it done.
Okay, I can make a motion.
Yeah, uh, I'll second it.
Your own favor? Good.
Trust me, we'll wait for it.
Oh, I understand.
It's obviously a bit on that transfer, home, you need to walk down the road there, you're gonna line up everything, materials, labels, those people, excavators.
It's gonna be with that.
Yeah, it'll call me. You have to make them do something, that's how they use our.
All right.
Okay.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna move on.
Is this gonna be printed in paper?
Special election.
We got some date for that, don't we?
We do. So I gotta talk to Leon, she had some notes in here, I think she was reading them, about speeding that up.
Are people already taking papers out, do you have to see that whole process?
No, no, we have, there's a.
Not yet.
Right here. So we can shorten the time period, but I wanna, when Leon comes back, cause this is law lingo, for lack of a better term. This law's just gonna shorten the period of delay, so as few as ten days. Finally did one. So, did you have a, a date in mind?
Nope, doesn't matter, it's gonna be within the ten days.
Did you make a decision?
Yeah.
Yeah, but.
It was an election special.
So we need, it was at least thirty, at least forty-four days.
Is that what it is, forty-four?
I was thinking forty-five and all.
With.
Well, it's, it says twenty-four, but you need thirty days for absentee ballots.
Okay, that's what I'm guessing.
So, at least forty, plus a few extra for me to print the ballots once the nomination papers are in.
So, do you have a date in mind?
No.
Okay. So forty-four days from today.
Forty-something, forty-two, forty-three, give me a few days. You have to certify the nomination papers and then print the ballots.
We set it for August fifth? Tuesday, you want it on Tuesday?
At the selectmen's meeting. So you're gonna have it all day long?
Well, that was my next question, I'd, I'd rather it be like a regular election.
Yeah, me too, eight to eight, that way everybody can come.
Yeah.
So you don't want it, don't want that day.
Okay, so let's do it on the twelfth.
Yeah, so that's thirty, should be plenty, right?
Yeah, cause if we went back, it was gonna be pushing it.
Today's the seventeenth. Yep, that should be fine.
Good. August twelfth it is.
You have to make a motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion and we set the special election for August twelfth.
For what position?
For selectmen.
To finish the term.
Finish the term of two years, sorry.
On favor?
Did you second?
Yep.
Okay, August twelfth.
If you're all done with the road commissioner, how do you?
So.
Yeah.
When?
Just write up that paper, Vim.
Yeah.
With that being said, when do the papers, when can they be taken out, now, as of tomorrow?
Um.
Or do you want a couple days to get them ready?
Well, I have to advertise, um, alright, so they have to be back in by, say, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen.
I see you, hold on, we're thinking, we're thinking, hold on.
So nomination papers have to, well, absentee here, on July twelfth.
What's that?
Absentees will, absentee ballots will be available July twelfth. So, we need like fourteen days or so, so yeah, if you wanna start.
We can give you time.
Wanna start Monday, have them available Monday, and then,
Sure.
Seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, yeah, should be good.
Good.
Okay.
So.
And they have to be returned when?
Right, Monday's the twenty-third, nomination papers are available. The twenty-third. How about by the seventh, is that enough, that's at least ten days.
By July seventh, good.
Nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen.
Wait a minute, so the papers are available, yeah, okay, so available one day, back by the seventh.
That gives me five, six days to get the ballots ready and.
Yeah. Rich has got a question.
Richard?
You said you were thinking, I tried that once, gave me a headache. Uh, well, I have a question though, uh, do you plan on meeting in July? I think in some meetings, that, with only one meeting in July, or no meeting, are you, do you and Kathy plan on meeting in July?
Yes.
Yes.
We have one scheduled.
And you have, and you have two meetings?
We have one scheduled July first, and after that,
Fifteenth?
Is the fifteenth, yeah, fifteenth.
But you're gonna have two meetings, okay, thank you.
Okay, so, June twenty-third, they're available.
Mm-hmm.
July seventh they're due. Absentee start. The, July twelfth.
Correct. Did you get what we did on the last one, the Pratt Hill Road thing?
No, but.
Put two and two together, I made the motion, and Kathy seconded it.
You voted for me.
To just put it in the road commission hand, so is that what you said?
Yes.
Here, Paul, here, Mickey.
And you voted yes.
Yeah, and he's gonna give something to us, bringing, I'll follow up with him.
Okay, good luck.
I will, don't worry. Alright, here we go, we're almost halfway there, Kathy.
Okay, are we ready, have we got that straight, no?
Yeah.
So we have to sign a warrant, are we, are we voting on anything else with the special town meeting election?
Nothing at all, just that.
Every election is actually a town meeting, so you have to sign a town warrant, let me just fill in the dates here.
Yeah.
August.
Are we electing in August?
August twelfth.
Alright, so I have to be open here. Read it over, make sure I, make any mistakes.
Alright, moving on, we good now?
Yep, I'll have John host this at the stores, Mary Rich tomorrow.
Perfect.
Okay, good. Okay, hall town, town hall rental policy.
Is this just going over the change that we made for the fees?
Yep, do you agree with the one twenty-five?
Yeah, I'm good with it, I just, I just didn't understand it until we talked earlier at the public hearing, so now I understand it, I'm good.
I make a motion that we accept the town hall rental policy.
I second.
With the change in fees to one twenty-five?
Yeah.
We went, uh, up to one twenty-five. One hundred to one twenty-five.
But everything else is the same?
Yeah.
Yep, you get your twenty-five dollars back if everything kosher.
Right, so then you have only a hundred dollars if you can't get it.
Yeah.
On favor?
Alright.
Fee schedule approval?
So, this is, uh, only thing we wanted to change is the five dollars for the notary, correct?
Yeah, and I added what?
And the clerical changes, yeah, I'm good. Yep, Peggy's language, we'll call it. Um, I make a motion we accept the, um, fee schedules.
I second it. On favor? Payroll disbursement warrant.
So you can require both of you to have to sign off on payroll, or one of you, either? Yeah, both of us, it's up to you.
So if we say both, do we physically both have to sign it, or can we one of the other, can we do either, is what she's saying?
Either.
I'm good with either.
Okay, so that would be B.
Uh-huh.
It's a good choice.
Yeah, I made a trip here Monday, at Town Hall.
Do you have to make a motion on that?
Yes.
Can I make a motion that, uh, we accept either of us to come in and sign warrants?
I'll second.
On favor?
Okay, I'll choose. So if you could, I don't know if you wanna circle, it sounds like it could be B or C, whichever, I think they usually choose B, which says any. But if you want.
Yeah, just circle B, right?
Yeah, and sign at the bottom.
I like your signature.
What's that?
I like your signature.
It's gotten progressively worse over the years.
Okay, state fees disbursement warrant.
This is mainly for motor vehicle, but it could be inland fishing, wildlife.
Make a motion that we accept the state fees disbursement warrant.
I second.
With any of you approving?
Yeah.
Yep, on favor? Fire contracts. Buckfield, Canton.
So.
Turner.
Yeah, so I would, Turner, what was that, I don't know.
Turner, yeah?
Well, I'm pushing Kirk Schwab to put the actual number in the rescue, I'm sorry, that's rescue I want.
No.
Because last year, he, he tried to say our population was different, he charged us more than what we budgeted, so I want that money amount.
No, it's only weight.
So, I wasn't involved in these contracts, obviously, but why is it that Buckfield is so much more money than Canton?
It's the other way around, isn't it?
Buckfield is a hundred and one dollars, and they're only covering two hundred and ninety-six people, Canton's thirty-five dollars, and they're covering eight hundred and ninety-six people, eight hundred and fifty-two.
Oh, per res, they're all.
How do they figure that out?
They're all trying to get to the same amount each fire department.
So are they in, could.
They're all talking together.
Yeah, okay, that's what I wanted. 'Cause it seems kinda, if they're gonna do that, then they shouldn't put that number on there.
I think charging the same as their residents of both their towns.
I don't know the answer to that.
You said one was, uh, one of all.
So they, they both charge just thirty grand, I think, this year?
That's one charges, please, man, for how many?
So thirty thousand this year from Buckfield, thirty thousand from Canton. Canton's covering eight hundred and fifty-two residents, and Buckfield's covering two hundred and ninety-six.
And Turner's thirty thousand too.
And Turner's thirty thousand too, and what do they cover?
Peggy? I understand in common that, you can't compare municipalities because, completely equal, because, Canton may have different costs to keep up their service than what Buckfield does, regardless, you know, so they have to look at it differently, you can't just say,
Yeah, no, I get, I'm.
It's not like only the Walmarts all over the place.
That's right, you could have, uh, uh, one town have new equipment, and their cost may be more, the other ones could all kind of pay off, so.
I was just trying to figure it out, how the contract cost went, worked, I wasn't involved in it, so.
If you don't wanna pay ten dollars for your idea, or five dollars for your idea.
Yeah.
Can you put up a date?
Don't think so.
So, um. I make a motion to accept the fire contracts as.
Written?
Written.
No, second it. On favor?
So all three, Canton, Turner, and Buckfield.
Yeah, I didn't have Turner in my packet, but I'm, I'm good with it, I'm good with it.
I, I don't know if you wanna accept this one yet, because it includes rescue in it, and there's no, it's only a per capita amount, and that's where the problem came last year. And I've been trying to get them to revise this.
Okay, clear.
With a year, annual amount, so there's no question.
Yeah.
And it is, I'm waiting, he said, oh, it goes to the rescue, doesn't the town manager get the contracts ready, but he sent it, he said to send it to Lisa Bennett. No, I'm not getting any answers.
Alright.
So if I were you, I would wait on this one.
Yeah, I only, I only, I only made the motion on what I had in my packet here, so I didn't have, I don't have Turner, so.
So Buckfield and Canton.
Correct.
On favor?
I'll try to get it by July first, that way we won't be in trouble without coverage. So these are the contracts, I think I have two copies, so we can send them one and keep one. And then they'll sign also on them. Oop, I'm sorry. This is Canton's fire, there's two. That's a Buckfield fire, two.
Maybe they'll wait on me to sign on this one.
Has it a place on the back?
Yeah, but they got names in the whole.
Oh, cross it out, I didn't notice that. That's Buckfield fire, right? Should be two copies.
Just chairs or something, you had a lot.
Yeah.
Can I get Turner under the bathroom, what she signed?
Okay, now we got, uh, are we done with them?
We just have the rescue for Buckfield.
Yep.
You need to find a second one. There's two there, so we can keep one and sign one.
Okay, now we got the rescue contracts.
Just Buckfield.
Just Buckfield.
For now.
I was good with that, I looked over these last night, so, I'll just try.
Did we have resigning?
The rescue one, no.
I'm like firm motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept the rescue contract with Buckfield as written.
I second it. On favor?
Should be two copies here.
I bet it's the same, but you're signing again.
Okay, uh, wage approval.
Is this the one she signed?
Oh, yes, ha, good catch.
Wage approval for twenty, twenty-five, twenty-six.
So, do we have to prove every one of them as one, or can we do, can we separate, pull, like?
You can make any changes you want, you can wait, it actually starts July first, so if you wanna think about it, you can.
Yeah, I wouldn't mind table that until July first.
The only changes on here from last year are animal control and to bring Jaleen up to what Bobber was making.
Right, but it's not gonna affect anyone, 'cause we're good to July first anyways.
Right.
Correct?
Yep.
Are you good with that, I make a motion?
You want, what table it?
Till July first. I make a motion to table this till July first.
I second it. On favor?
Uh-huh.
I said move it right along, good.
Ordinance committee worksheet, work list.
Ordinance committee work list.
So we had site review.
Correct.
Ordinance.
Yep. Um, so that language you need worked out in administrative ordinance part two, that we voted down, is there a way to separate that, or can we put them, is there a way to separate that from what it was written with? It was tied in with the road commissioner?
No, uh, you have to amend it.
That's what I mean, can we have them work on wording on that, to separate that, so it's not all one?
It's gonna be all in the same ordinance, but they can change the wording.
The wording, yes, that, how are they gonna do it, that, that's what I like to, I like to work on.
But you'll have to give them some of the place, what you want them. But you'll have to give them some every place, what you want them to.
That's fine.
Alright, administrative part two, I know administrative part one may need some work too, cause it's so old and now.
Okay. Do you?
Want both?
Yeah, I was just gonna say that. Dave's got a question, Kathy.
Who, Dave?
So, don't you have to amend that administrative ordinance to dispose of tax required property too?
That's what I was just talking about.
Well, the warrant article was approved as the lawyer writ- wrote it. I'm planning to start the process, it's, we've been waited too long.
So, you might wanna think about moving that to special town meeting.
Well, from what Darryl said at the town meeting, it was nothing significant, it was too, I don't know.
You have tax required property.
You think they can get that done before them?
So, they think it's significant.
Do you think, when do they meet again?
No, I'm sure. They don't have any meeting scheduled until they have a list.
So, I don't know if they can get it done in that time frame, that's the problem, they don't have a month. I don't disagree with you.
The way he sounded, it wasn't a big, a huge change they made and our article is correct now and we're gonna send letters out, it takes ninety days. Get, we have to give them ninety days to respond, right Carol? So, I don't know.
I don't disagree, I I don't know the issue, but.
Ricky, do you have a question?
No.
No?
Um, but I think it definitely needs to be, the wording needs to be fixed. And.
I don't wanna rush it.
No.
Mm-mm.
Is this open judgment?
Wait, you've got something?
Yeah, I'd like some clarity, um, on.
We already have.
How the elected position as a road commissioner can't be, um, overseen by the select board. We just had that special town bingo where it was gonna try, they tried to do it at a appointed position. Now Kathy lawyer probably saw the MMA, uh, response from that, could you expound on that?
When we tried to get it for the appointed position, uh, at that meeting, we had that a special meeting. It, uh, did not pass.
Now, is is that MMA, MMA, MMA ruling, is that open to everybody, is that public access now, or is that?
No, it's not. Is it MMA?
MMA legal?
I mean, not ev- not anybody can write into it, right? Is that your question, Dave?
So, I guess I want clarity on the reason why we were trying to do that, I think, is that whatever the road, an elected official as the road commissioner does, the town has no say in it as a select board. So, the town is not liable for something that happens because of what the road commissioner did.
Like a bond, the bond, is he talking about?
No, he, no.
No, he's talking about jobs that the road commissioner does.
Yeah, you know, if something goes sour, is the town responsible, the way you can't, you can't hold them accountable, you know, he just kinda does what he wants, you know. Gary, that was a good, uh, example of that, we had a special town meeting, we said, we didn't want our mill rate to go up by one percent, we said we weren't gonna do that and the road commissioner did it and it's kinda like a separate entity and and that's fine, I just want clarity about that.
What the road commissioner did on Gary's team was repair storm damage and coincidentally, it repaired the road and that's part of the FEMA reimbursement. It's not that the road commissioner went rogue, it's that that storm, that five inches of rain.
And that's true, you're right, and that was, that was a, uh, a four inch rainstorm, it was catastrophic. So, we weren't maintaining that road anyway and then he went up and fixed it, but that's not even the side of the, I guess I wanted clarity on why we can't even hold him responsible for what he does.
Would that be because he's a town employee?
So, you you're asking for the ordinance to be clarified in that respect?
Yeah, because the MMA said, no, he's an elected official, you three, well, it's two of you now, you have no control, what are you got?
Well, that's not true.
Yeah, we do.
And is that the truth?
No.
No, we have.
Pretty much, as you understand it.
You you're not reading it right, if you read the, in the ordinance, I don't know if it's part one or part two, I think it must be part two.
Two.
I'd have to go back and look, I'll, I'll look and I'll have your answer, what I, what, how I interpret it.
Well, it's, it's how.
He does have to go by what we.
The legal.
You're in charge of the money.
Yeah, that's one of the reasons why they wanted him appointed, just so they could say, okay, look, you know, we want you to do this.
He still, he still has to go by what we.
Correct. I'll, I'll, I'll.
I always see Kathy when he's at a job site, who is that?
What's that?
You're always at the job site, I can see your truck there.
Yeah, they they still, he still has to go by what we ask.
Yeah, then, whatever. So, yeah, I think that's gonna be the legal issue.
My opinion is, he has the right to do what he wants on the roads, the select board has the right on the money.
That's what, that's what the agenda said.
Yeah, they're in charge of every penny.
Correct.
That's right, so if he decides to do something, but you don't agree with it, you can say, we're not competitive.
Correct, I agree with that.
Peggy?
From the state law, powers and duties of the road commissioner. The road commissioner under the authority of a majority of the members of the select board has charge of off off the repairs of all highways and bridges within the town, towns and has authority to employ the necessary personnel and equipment and purchase material for the repair of highways and bridges. Now, this is what we don't have in ours, it says, the road commissioner shall give bond to the satisfaction.
Yeah, that's the text, the document.
We don't have that piece, but next it says, uh, let's see.
That's what Darryl pointed out.
In access of statute charter position or ordinance to contrary, any decision involving the duties and responsibilities of the road commission must be made by a majority of the members of the select board whose decision is final. The road commissioner's compensation must be such sum as a legislative body votes annually, the road commission shall render to the select board monthly statements of the road commission's expenditures and may not receive any money from the treasury except on the order of the select board, so that pretty much tells you what they request.
Yeah.
Yep.
That's, I'm reading great for law. I was reading law today.
So, is there anything else we need them to work on?
I'll be taking a walk, bed.
I guess my only other thing, and correct me if I'm wrong, but maybe we do need some clarification on. Ad hoc committees.
So, that's administrative, so part two, ad hoc.
Yeah, and we can talk then on what I mean with that.
You gotta talk to them anyway about the road.
Yeah, right, yeah, yeah, yeah.
About the site plan, if you want.
We already got a lot of, yeah.
That's a good start, come on.
Yeah, I'll keep busy. Alright.
Okay, community action grant deadline, August twenty-nine, twenty-five.
Do you want to apply for another grant? I know we're still working on the first one, but we didn't hold new hearings, so we're still working from that same list that we had.
Been heard.
Is this the stuff that we can put it towards?
Yeah, we had, we had public hearings and this is the list that everyone who showed up decided we should apply for.
I mean, why not, free, it's, I'm not, I'm not gonna use the word free money, cause we're all paying for it, but it's grant money.
A tax.
Yeah, right.
Summarize.
Some of them.
Someone, someone's gonna get it, might as well be us.
Right.
So, what's the?
Oh, we could do the CEO professional development training and stuff.
That would be good. You on that email from Scott? Emails?
I've gotten some emails.
He didn't get to one, I, I talked to him this morning, we'll talk, we'll get to that, but I, that's, that is a good one, from what he told me.
Okay, we make a motion that we should try for a grant.
Yeah, but you have, I'm sorry.
What's that?
Yeah, specify.
For which items?
Yeah.
I can write it up if you tell me what it's gonna be in it.
I would, I'll let you keep finishing, but I definitely think that.
Number nine?
Yeah.
Come on, let us know when number nine.
CEO professional development. And where's the other one I just saw?
Source water protection, I'm not clear on what some of these are.
Which one?
These seven, yeah, I'm not sure what they mean, or what we could spend money on to improve.
Broadband access, is that just for town or is that localized to here?
They covered, I think, a lot of it.
Who?
I think they're doing that now.
Okay. I don't think we need EV charges in our parking lot, that's just gonna cost us money. People be plugging in, leaving all overnight, charging on their R-dog.
Sometimes you have to pay, don't they?
Yeah.
People appear checking on vulnerable folks, could have a plant, I don't know what we'd spend money on.
Yeah, I don't know.
Training, I don't know. DEP, stream, smart crossings, Ben's gone.
Um, could we start with that, or do we have to make it wind up before a certain date?
What was it, August?
August twenty-fifth, is it August twenty-fifth?
August twenty-ninth.
We can start with that one?
Yep, we'll table it till, I mean, we're gonna apply for everything together in one grant.
Is there a way to get more information on what these are?
Yeah, I can do some research.
So, yeah, if you read them off some of us who were here by your window.
I was here, and I, I have minutes somewhere.
Oh, okay.
I have a whole folder. Alright, do research tables.
Okay. Now you guys, we gotta go into executive.
Really, can you put that at the end?
I was just saying, can we move that to the end?
If you're comfortable appointing people without executive, uh, employee reviews?
Oh, oh, so we, I thought the executive session was just for employee reviews and then we had to come back to the appointments. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Oh.
If you want to vote on appointments before doing an employee review.
Well, I don't wanna make these people have to come back if they wanna come back.
Okay. Well.
I would suggest if you're gonna go into executive session, that can we flip those?
That's what we just talked about.
That's what we were talking about.
I don't assume.
Alright, before you hire someone, you want to talk to them and go over their faults and positive, but you're gonna skip that and do it after you decide on hiring someone, right?
I thought they were gonna do it after the resignations. That would be handy.
Yeah, we're only reviewing you and, and.
Right. Okay, if you're confident you've made up your decision before leaving us.
I don't plan on firing you, Lian, that's actually getting that. But that's where you're going.
Right.
Took me a minute to figure out what road you were going down, but I figured it out.
Okay, we get flip flops.
Yeah.
I don't know what you're doing.
Let's make a motion on that.
I make a motion to move the executive session to the end of after agenda items for next meeting.
I second it. On favor?
Alright, so I have some more resignations that came in. Those copies, one for Kathy. It's gonna be hard to keep track of.
Do we read these out loud, or?
Do you wanna make a motion, or you read them first, I don't care.
It's just, you said more, is it just this one that came in?
There's some in your packet.
No, I got the one in the packet, you said there's more that came in today, is it just?
There's three there.
Oh, there's three.
Well, with regret that we accept these resignations.
Alright, so we got, can I read them?
Yep, go ahead.
Al Bazzelli from all committees. Al Bazzelli.
Okay.
This is resignation put up.
Yeah, these are our resignations, Wesley Brown from the road committee. And Diane de Blasio from the road committee. Did I pronounce that right? Um, Paul Burmeister from ordinance and road committee. And Jane Quint from the ordinance committee.
And?
And this one?
Should be one more, I think.
Is Al Bazzelli phone?
Everything.
Phone.
Everything.
All.
I only had those two, unless I'm missing something.
Diane LaRochelle.
Oh, you got that today, you said, but I didn't, we don't have any.
I don't know where it is. I don't think I found it yet, but he did say.
And that was from the?
Health officer.
Health officer?
And that, from, since, uh, election, I hope you're ready, right, you guys?
Excuse me?
That one you left resigned, please, this is.
I'm assuming.
I know there was one from Diane.
There's one on what?
I know there was one from Diane, I just don't know what I did with.
So, you? We haven't got the.
We ain't got that yet.
So, do you wanna remake the motion?
I make a motion, we regret to accept all these, like, resignations.
Second.
On different committees. Favor?
Peggy's got a question for us.
Peggy?
Who does that leave on the road committee?
Not many.
Just wondering.
Dave Terrio, Jennifer Garrigan, Rick Gammann.
Thank you.
Who was the third one?
Jen Garrigan.
Jen Garrigan.
Oh. I have another question about resignations. Did you receive the message that according to the planning board ordinance, if somebody misses three executive meetings, it's up to you to decide, I mean, by the ordinance he's resigned, I would have no problem if you decided to. Who are you talking about?
Dave Terrio.
Is he still there?
No.
It was, it was not clear when I spoke to him at camp meeting, what his plan was on that, but he seemed to indicate it could be reconsidered. I don't know.
I mean, I.
Was one of them, when he went on his bear hunt?
Pardon?
Was one of the reasons he wasn't there?
He, he, he has bear hunted, he was going to Europe and he had to go to an initial meeting without going to Europe.
So, they were excused.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
So, it's excused.
Okay, well, the ordinance doesn't mention excuse, that's why I'm saying, I would not mind if he continued on the road, given, I know what he was missing.
Yeah, I think. Yeah, I'm good, yeah.
But per the ordinance, he's resigned.
Right, exactly, I guess I'm saying, I'm just, not knowing what to do, I follow the rules.
We got the appeals email, I searched things around.
Trying to figure out who's got what.
I know, it's confusing.
Um, so, what did it say about us?
So, I think Margot's term is up on the appeals board and she'd rather be an alternate and you.
Oh, I did read that, Tom Rogg read, I know him, so, yeah. So, my next question is, we have to rea- we, we can reappoint people to these committees if they have, if we have. Where's the book? Where's the book? If anyone's put in for it, right? Like Road Committee, Ordinance Committee.
Normally you would reappoint a member's term who has expired.
Yep, for us.
Unless they've said they don't wanna serve.
Okay.
Cause you need, like the lawyer said, you need a reason to.
Right.
Except for Margot should rather be an alternate.
Right, so that's what I'm trying to figure out, so.
I have them highlighted, so I don't.
On here, talking.
Uh, do you wanna use mine? Cause I think I have them all highlighted and I crossed out the.
We can just make a general motion, all right, to reappoint.
No.
We can't, we have to do them individually.
They've done it in the past, like, reappoint the same Row Committee, but.
All right. Well, we might as well start with you.
I'm dying tonight.
I make a motion to, uh, if reappoint would be the right word, but reappoint Leanne Bedard.
So as, I live several.
Yeah, I'm looking.
You want me to just write them in? Cause there's like ten things.
Yeah, exactly. I was thinking, Town Department Treasurer.
E nine one one.
E nine one one, Adressing Agent, and Public Access.
MV Agent, Inland District.
Registered Board.
Election Morning.
Yeah, just write those in.
Okay.
Give me a second.
I second it. No favor?
Well, thanks.
All right, I make a motion to reappoint Barbara Robinson.
No, she's my employee.
That's right, she's yours.
She is.
Jay Lane's yours. General Assistant Director, we've already, didn't we get reappointed to that time meeting?
Yep.
Yep. Scott Mills, we gotta talk about that. Now, we can do that now, with two applications?
Yeah, I just don't say any confidential information out loud.
Okay, but we can say their names.
The applicants, no.
Okay.
Not unless you wanna hire one, you can mention that.
Well, can we do that in executive session?
Employee reviews? No.
Cause I'd like to talk, I'd like to talk this about what I found out from Scott Mills, this one on the phone, and the email he sent to me and Kathy regarding his, the interview process. I wasn't involved in the interview process.
Favor one.
Yeah.
If I were to find you, I'd make a motion to the one you wanna hire.
All right.
Yeah.
I make a motion for the information I got from Scott Mills, who was involved in the interview process with the CEO, to hire Jared Johnson as a new Code Enforcement Officer.
I second it. No favor?
LPI two, Plumbing Inspector?
Yes, yeah.
Do you wanna make that motion too, just to be clear?
Um, I make a motion to hire Jared Johnson as a licensed plumbing inspector.
I second it. No favor?
All right, so that brings us down to.
Health Officer, you're finding somebody.
Yeah, I think we need to wait on that one. And same thing with, um. So regarding the other applicant for ACO, I'm gonna, I'd like to make a motion to hire, reappoint Brandon Holmes as the ACO.
Oh, you second it? No favor? And Constable?
Make a motion to reappoint Jonathan Assam for the Constable.
You gonna second it? No favor?
Did you put Leadership Management Director down for yours too?
No.
Okay.
I want you to find someone else.
Well, then we need to table that, and if I don't know anyone else. What's that job description?
Um, apply for grants to help the town to pre-, um, be prepared for emergencies, do all the FEMA work, go measure roads, you know, take pictures, um. Emergency preparedness. Peggy would be awesome.
I was just gonna say, you will wanna take that on?
No, no, I, I'm a fool. Aw, come on. You would be good.
Me and Ben would do the FEMA things.
She would.
Yeah, but someone needs to do a better, better job than what we did. There's training provided.
When Tom Standard had that job, he actually used to gather us, uh, municipal officials and others together in the room. We had table stop exercises about what we were doing in the event of an emergency. We also used to have to go and take FEMA classes too.
Yeah, but they still offer NIMs classes over to Oxford County.
Yeah, yeah, NIMs. I thought you had that role.
I fell in because we have to have one.
Oh, oh, now you want someone else to take it?
Yes, I don't want it. You, you have to have somebody in charge.
No, I get it, because they.
You need somebody else, so I told them. You just have to find out who it is.
I talked to Cantons, but he wasn't interested.
Talk to who?
Cantons, Emergency Management Director.
Can we, can we wait till July first on that?
Yeah.
All right, I'll table it till July first. Need a motion for that?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, Al Bazzelli resigns, we're gonna go with him.
Convenient.
What's that?
No, well, he's hired.
Yeah, yeah, good. Um. Dan LaRochelle resigned from Budget Committee as well?
He didn't get reelected.
Oh, you gotta have.
They're, they're all, I'm sorry, that's not up to you.
Yeah, okay. Dave Terrio for Planning Board. We just talked about that, so I make a motion to reappoint Dave Terrio to the Planning Board. Kathy?
Yeah, I second it.
Okay.
No favor?
All right, so I'm gonna make a motion to appoint Tom Rodriguez from the alternate to the permanent position on the Appeals Board.
As a permanent?
As a permanent. Kathy?
Who's that?
Tom Rodriguez.
Oh, yeah, okay, I second it.
We had, he was on the, yeah.
Right, he was an alternate.
Yeah.
No favor?
And then I'll make a motion to make Marguerite Dudley an alternate on the Appeals Board.
Second it. No favor?
Burmeister quit, Jane Quint quit.
She wants to be an alternate?
Who does?
Does she?
Who?
Marguerite.
Yes, but this was, that's what this said.
Yep.
Um. Paula Brown.
Sorry, Trevor.
Yeah, Paula Brown, Jeremy Johnson, Cindy Violet. When's the, uh, you're on the ordinance committee? Who, who was, someone here, when's their next meeting?
They haven't scheduled one. Daryl Brown, uh, Daryl Bonas says, but they haven't had a list yet, so. Maybe they usually meet on the Thursday Wednesday or?
Okay, um. I'll make a motion to keep Paula Brown as an alternate.
Second it. No favor?
Uh, I make a motion to keep, uh, reappoint Jeremy Johnson on the Ordinance Committee.
Second it. No favor?
Wait, hold on, slow down a little bit. Paula Brown.
Getting writer's grant?
No, I just need to catch it up. Paula Brown is alternate, Jeremy. Johnson is regular member. Okay.
Good.
Yeah.
I make a motion to reappoint Cynthia Violet, the Secretary on the Ordinance Committee.
Second it.
You're going to appoint her as a secretary?
As a regular member.
Well, okay, regular member, sorry.
No favor?
Yeah. I'm reading it as written. He resigned, resigned, resigned. Cynthia Violet, yeah. Make a motion to reappoint Cynthia Violet in the Cemetery Committee?
I second it. No favor?
I make a motion to reappoint Lenny Eichmann on the Solid Waste Committee?
I second it.
Favor?
Okay, slow down for just one sec. I'm gonna find cemetery, I don't know, over here.
Oh, I didn't know you were writing in two different spots.
You have to sign all these.
Perfect. I get nothing to do until tomorrow morning at four when I leave for work.
And Lenny to the Waste. All right.
You good?
Yep.
Are you done with your list?
No. I think we got three pages as well. Uh, make a motion to reappoint Dana Dudley to the Rep Committee?
I second it. No favor?
Ooh, we might be done. Committee is this.
Comprehensive.
No, it's the Irish, Lord of the Irish Trust.
Um, before you get to that, are you, you gonna be on the ad hoc planning committee?
Sure.
Do you want to be?
Yeah, that's the one we were talking about, yeah, that's, yeah.
Do you want Kathy to nominate you?
Sure.
Nominative.
That's what I wanted to, to speak about, um, per the other, the way we were composing the committee. We were supposed to have somebody from the Budget Committee, and our first meeting was in December. They said, well, budget doesn't mean to April, and we still have never gotten anybody from the Budget Committee. There were Budget Committees on the case. Pardon? There were Budget Committee members who were on the confidentiality, right, and ad hoc.
Did you make a motion for that?
Yep. Yep, well, not, some of them are designated. So we have a couple of trust funds. Laura Fogg has a CD that puts interest into the savings which people in need, the, the trustees can decide to give them like $1,000 if.
Okay.
If there's enough.
Yep.
Evelyn Hutchinson, I think, is for cemeteries. I've never really touched that up very often.
All right, so we're on the Lord of the Irish Trust Fund.
Project is.
I make a motion to reappoint Dave Bowen to the Lord of the Irish Trust Fund.
Second it. No favor?
Motion for Teresa Hinckley to the Lord of the Irish Trust Fund.
Second it. No favor?
Um, Margaret Dudley to the Lord of the Irish Trust Fund.
Second it. No favor?
I'll catch up.
Thank you. Okay.
Keith LaRochelle to the Lord of the Irish Trust Fund.
Second it. No favor?
Ma- Mumau? To Mumau to the Lord of the Irish Trust Fund.
Second it. No favor?
What's the X mean? Is that the minstrel school fund we exited out?
Yeah, because it's under the.
Are these good?
Um. Oh, we still do need those, I guess. Even though the town accepted the money, we still need trustee.
Okay, so we're gonna go with motion to reappoint Lorraine Parsons to the Evelyn Hutchinson Trust Fund.
Second it. No favor?
Dave Bowen to the Evelyn Hutchinson Trust Fund.
Second it. No favor?
Tell me when you're ready. Um, Arthur Harvey to the Evelyn Hutchinson Trust Fund.
Second it. No favor?
I wanna just put your name on this one too, or we can go through the formality. Leanne Bedard to the minstrel, minstrel and school fund.
Second it. No favor?
I thought that got turned over to the town.
That's what we just talked about, but she said.
Still need trustees.
We still need trustees.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Um. Conrad Ray to the, I don't know, minstrel and school fund.
Second it. No favor?
Ministerial, thank you. I was trying to figure out how to pronounce that. And finally Rebecca Ellsman to the ministerial and school fund.
Second it. No favor?
Now. You'll have a, we can wait till next time to fill the empties.
Yep, there's a bunch of Row Committee, um, there's a Waste Committee.
All right, I'll check it out.
But. Rep Committee needs people.
Yeah, um, let's, uh, wait till next time. Hello, Dave.
See ya.
See ya. All right, let's move on.
Appointments, resignations, okay, we're gonna add.
Yeah.
Ordinance Committee.
We got the.
Got that.
Rotator, we got the annual appointments.
Annual appointments.
We listed that.
Training?
Um, I think I emailed Aaron the two trainings I got. I printed this one up.
Yeah, I got that.
Normally we do it on paper, but if you wanna take the class.
What do you mean on paper? I'd rather do it on paper, cause that's a bad sound.
Yeah, I gave you a packet in your binder.
Okay, so I saw that.
Yeah, that's okay.
And that's all of it. Just look me through that.
So you know what's public and what's not.
Yep, okay.
Review correspondence.
This is just for you to get, this is the bottom one. That's the FEMA information I just got. We didn't receive the check yet.
Which one is it?
I didn't give it to you.
Yeah, I got it.
Oh, I did?
Yeah, so.
I gave you the first few pages.
Do you know, we don't know the amount though.
Um, yeah, so, but it said in here, four hundred and.
Ninety-two?
Is that it?
Four ninety-two, seven eleven fifty-six.
Project cost, correct? Say it's your dynamic rate, but daddy.
Well, I just, the reason why I ask is I know the last award letter that we got for four ninety-six, the money didn't say four ninety-six, it said four sixty-five, so it's probably a different amount of what it shows here.
I can look tomorrow, um.
But either way.
All right, hazard mitigation, two hundred and thirty thousand, that's the rest.
Yeah, we got one for Row Committee.
Perfect.
This night. Federal share. We get like, um.
So when you get that number, what, how do you know which one is, were complete and which one we have to use to, to the designated roads?
This is for project number seven, three, four, six, three, seven. And it has, it, it tells about hazard mitigation and, there's all the information here. I didn't copy the whole thing, cause I don't have a waste paper.
Okay, we'll, we'll figure it out. We got more money coming out, so we.
Yeah.
Okay. We're gonna do this on July first, do you mind waiting? We're gonna do the appointments on July first, do you mind waiting? We're gonna, we're gonna do the, fill the rest on July first. Do you mind waiting? Okay.
Did I give you this?
Yes.
That goes in the book. We did get the grant for the new ergonomic chairs and floor mats, it's just a press release. We did get the grant for the new ergonomic chairs and floor mats, it's just a press release.
Saw that.
Please.
Yeah, a question. I wanna go back for a minute on calendar stuff. When is, uh, when is the, uh, papers available for?
Mondays.
Oh, is this on Monday?
Yeah.
These are all ready for you guys to sign, but you probably wanna do our stuff first.
Yeah, we will. You can wait long enough, so we'll do it.
Agenda items for next meeting.
So, we're gonna look like that, not every meeting anyway.
We need to talk about.
We did.
Yeah, I looked at it here. Town hall improvement contract.
Yes.
We need to talk about that.
Turner Rescue. Hopefully, I can get that.
And the town hall contracts. The payment situation, so we can get her approved for that.
Yeah, that's what you just said, right? Town hall improvement contract?
Is that what I said?
I think so. Unless it was something else you were talking about.
No, that's right. Sorry, I've been waiting since four.
You're gonna do wage approvals?
Wage approval?
Yep.
Um, next meeting.
Yep.
Pre reaction grant?
Yep. Gonna be another long meeting.
I think that's it, though, isn't it?
You gonna talk about the Melbury or anything, but you guys got my email.
Yep, yep.
Just to estimate.
Joining?
Well, we may make a motion. No, we may make a motion, we move to executive session.
Pursuant to MRS, MRSA one, chapter thirteen, section four, five, six, employer review.
Is there a second?
Second it. On favor? I knew we had to do that.
It's a cover.
Alright, so these, I need these back. These go in his folder, but you might wanna look at them from other, last time. And mine are, will be next.
We'll have a small.